Good morning, everybody. Welcome to County Council's preliminary agenda meeting for May 5th, 2020. Happy Cinco de Mayo. We are doing this remotely again through Zoom due to the COVID-19 crisis. We will be taking public comments from, that will be read at the end of the meeting. So if you have such comments, please email them into us or telephone, as in the past, information about that can be found on the county's website, I'm sure. The first item tomorrow will be a Pledge of Allegiance. Then we will offer public comment tomorrow for any items that are on the agenda. After that, we will then look to for approval for the minutes from the regular meeting of April 22nd, 2020. Does anybody from County Council have any comments or questions with regard to the, to the minutes? All right, hearing none. I will then turn to Dr. Taylor to read through the agenda items today, if she doesn't mind.
So Agenda Item Number Five, we would be looking at annual service and maintenance of elevators and alterations of elevators at Fair Acres in various county buildings for a period of five years.
All right, Mr. Madren, is this, is this something you're taking on?
I believe that Mr. Beerling's handling this, although, there he is.
Ah, there's Mr. Beerling, okay. Hello, Mr. Beerling.
Morning, good morning. I hope everybody is well. I'm getting through this situation that we are in. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval to advertise two invitations to bid. Furnish for a five-year period. It'll be a three-year contract with county option of two one-year renewals, all labor, tools, and equipment for the service inspection, maintenance of county-owned elevators in various buildings. For various buildings in the county of Delaware, subject to the solicitor's approval. These bids will create contracts for elevator maintenance and modernization. The first bid will be for all the elevators in the courthouse, government center, and other county-owned buildings. The second contract will be for the Fair Acres complex elevators located in Buildings 6, 8, and 18. The contract specifications repaired, were prepared using a previously performed safety audit in accordance with the present PA Labor and Industry Elevator Safety Code. It's applicable to all county-owned elevator equipment. All elevators' safety deficiencies, including the safety audit, will be a part of the new elevator maintenance and modernization contract. The elevator maintenance specifications will be for a term of five years, three-year maintenance, and then two one-year extensions, at the county's option. We, we will include the present elevator safety code for all the equipment in the county-owned buildings. The contracts will be requiring the lowest bidder to correct the safety issues noted from the safety audit, perform all the required inspection, inspections, and testing and maintenance items for the county-owned elevators. Also included in this contract will be labor material for maintenance items. If there's any questions, I'll answer them now.
I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to figure out, is, is this separate and apart from the elevator repair that we have budgeted in our capital budget for $4 million, or is this the same project?
This is the same project, Mr. Beerling. What we've done is we've had an analysis done of everything, and we incorporated any repairs that we think might need to be made to maintain the elevators, while we're doing the modernization. And one of the things, the reason that we're doing a separate contract for Fair Acres is that we can't get into Fair Acres now to do a walkthrough with the contractor. So I talked with Fair Acres. Fair Acres asked me if I could put this off for approximately 60 to 90 days, which we're going to do, but we can proceed with the other buildings and try and get them in. So that's why we're saying it'll be two contracts instead of one great big contract. Plus, there's, there's different, not specifications, but there's different rules and regulations for a health facility. So Fair Acres would stand on its own.
So is there, so basically, we're at the stage of just advertising for bids for the repair project? I had thought we were already moving ahead on that.
This is, this is a twofold project. So what we did is we incorporated the maintenance, okay? What they're bidding on is the maintenance, to keep these going and get them inspected and everything else, while they're doing a modernization. So like, let's take Fair Acres, for instance. We have four elevators in Building 8. One is a freight elevator. So the assumption that, that I've made is, I don't want to rebuild elevator 9, 10, and 11, and then, and then have to use one of them as a freight. So the first elevator we would do would be the freight elevator. So we would do the maintenance on that, and then the modernization would start with the freight elevator. That way, we get that up and running, and if we have, we'll be using one of the other elevators for a freight elevator, but it's the old, it won't be the new elevator, so.
Okay, so I guess I'm still confused. The modernization is the repair, and that's already underway, or this is part of this bid?
No, it's, the repair will be done first, and that's why it's, it's an own contract. It's a three-year with our choice of doing two one-years after that. So we're going to go in there some repairs that need to be made. They're going to do the repair, the contractor will do the repair, the same contractor will be doing a modernization on that, too.
Hey, Jack, this is Mike Madren. Can I give you a hand here?
Sure, Mike, I appreciate that as well.
Councilwoman Schaefer, you're right that we did do some repairs on the elevators, and that's probably what you're thinking of. We, we had a situation where, you know, we were concerned going into an inspection about the elevators and their condition, so we undertook repairs and completed those. Now, now we're going to do the modernization project. That's not underway yet. So we, since, since you guys began your term in January, we did undertake some repairs to the elevators in the courthouse. And that might be the repair project that you're thinking of.
And Mike, this is Brian here. My recollection was that when this came up last year, in the dark days before Elaine, Christine, and Monica joined us, there, there was an issue about getting somebody to come in and give us a contract to even serve as, to service them because the elevators were in such disrepair. So there was some understanding, I think, that I had, that in order for anybody to even promise to service these elevators, we needed to really make improvements to them before they would agree to service them. Is that?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. They, they were in a, in order to have just a maintenance contract, we need to get them up to a level where they just need to be maintained. So the recommendate, the recommendation of our elevator engineer was, look, these things, even if you get them up to a level of being maintained, their useful life is basically at its end. So that's why we're undertaking the modernization and replacement project.
Okay, one last question, that, to understand the dollars here. The money that is in our capital budget, we budgeted $4 million, 3.2 to be spent in 2020. Does that include the sum that we've already spent in 2020 on the repair, or is that looking forward?
The repairs we did were pretty minimal. I think, Jack, maybe $20,000 total?
Yeah, I think that the one repair, Michael, was $11,000, and if my memory serves me right, the other repair was somewhere around $9,000, $10,000. So yeah, you are correct.
And time-wise, if we go out to advertise this now, what is, what approximately, when would be, we be looking at starting this project?
So we-
Not in Fair Acres, in the, in the government building?
Yeah, we just did a six-month extension with our current maintenance contractor, and that was with an eye toward, with a termination clause, with an eye toward hopefully starting this in about four months. We have to advertise two consecutive weeks, and then we're going to give the contractors about four weeks to reply. Then with our responsible contract ordinance, the, the contract has to sit in purchasing for 30 days for any inspection. So, you know, we're about two and a half months out there, three months, so somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
I know one of the, Mike, you and I spoke, and I think I spoke with Elaine previously, too, about the notion of, wouldn't it be neat if we could do this elevator work now when the government buildings were empty? I take it from your timeline right now. Hopefully, the government buildings won't be empty in, in four months when, when this work begins. Is there any ability, given the current crisis, I guess I'm looking to Bill Martin, is there any ability for us to shorten the timeframe here so that we can make these repairs during this, during the crisis, when the building would be empty, and therefore, you know, maybe, maybe it would be safer if we had, obviously, the fewer elevators we have, we're going to need to social distance presumably for some time. If we have fewer elevators, it's going to be more people on them. So there would be, I think, for public safety purposes, an interest in getting this done sooner rather than later. Are there any changes that we can make to that timeline, given the, given the emergency that exists?
There's, there are certain of the, of the charter periods that Mike referenced that could be suspended in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Proclamation and the County's Emergency Proclamation. I mean, you'd be balancing the practicalities of running a reasoned process to identifying the appropriate vendor, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I just don't think practically is the kind of thing you can get done in a month. You might be able to move that four months back to three months.
Yeah, I guess it was really the, having the bids sit there to let people look at them for a month that I'm thinking might not, might not compromise the situation. Maybe we cut it down to one week instead of a month. You know, obviously, the rest of council would need to think about that, and maybe we need to think about the implications of that. But yeah, I, I don't imagine it's going to cut it down to a month, but if we could cut it down to three months even, yeah, I think that would be useful.
I'll look some more at that between now and the meeting tomorrow evening.
Yeah, I would, I would just note that, you know, we, we do need to go through the, the formal bidding process for this. You know, this is not a COVID-related item, so it's not covered. And not withstanding the fact that it would be more convenient to have the work done while we're not having the heavy traffic in the building, the actual repair itself is not COVID-related, and I don't think there's any basis under which we can shortcut that process. But I would, of course, defer to Mr. Martin for the final ruling on that.
We'll take a look and be ready to address that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just to, just to reiterate, I, I don't contend that fixing elevators is akin to, to dealing with a crisis, but to the extent that we need to social distance, if we take out half of our elevators from, from working order, that's going to make our social distancing efforts more difficult in, in the months to come, too. So, so let us, let us know tomorrow, Mr. Martin, but I take your point, Ms. Ruth, and certainly, we want to make sure that we're, that we're complying with not only the, the letter of the law, but also the, the rationale behind it. There are reasons why these, these times are in there, and we don't want to throw them aside, will and ill. Anything else for Mr. Beerling on, on this agenda item?
I just wanted to mention the, and I would imagine this has been looked at, whether there is a Co-Stars contract that would be available, or something in that line that would expedite this. Of course, we want a very good contractor, but you know, whether or not there's something in those lines that would, it would be a faster process.
I will certainly take a look, Mary Ann. I don't think that's something we've looked at yet. Given the scope of the contract, I kind of doubt it, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Zidic, because I, for one, would definitely like to see these done at this time, when we don't have a lot of people here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beerling. I guess we'll turn to the next item, which I think is also yours, Mr. Beerling.
Could I just butt in for one quick moment for the viewing public? And I've said this at previous council meetings, but I, I think it's important for the public who's watching, who has already started to fall asleep, listening to us talk about elevators, and may be surprised that we're not talking about the pandemic. I think it's important just for everyone who's watching to understand that, just like with any organization, government needs to continue to function as best we can as well, and that's what's going on this morning. We need to be stewards of the taxpayer dollar and make sure that contracts that are up for renewal and, you know, work that has to happen around county government, that we're making sure that that doesn't drop, just like you are for the organizations that you work for in your own personal lives. So just understand, it's not that we don't realize we're in the midst of a pandemic. Much of what we talk about will tangentially be driven by what's going on, but it's not going to be the, the main topic of conversation this morning. But understand, you know, we, we had a press conference yesterday. Please watch it if you'd like more of an update on COVID. We will no doubt have other ones in the very near future, but like I said, this is, this is going to be a lot of boring nuts and bolts type stuff today. So just wanted to make sure everyone knew that.
Well, speak for yourself, Mr. Madden. I thought Jack's elevator pitch was pretty nice there.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. The second item is, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval of a proposal of engineering services for computer services, for computer room renovations at the government center complex, EDPA, Taggillian, Hartman, Valley Forge. The amount not to exceed $45,000, subject to the solicitor's approval. The scope of the work will be as follows. The fire protection system for the enclosed server room, pre-action system for the areas outside the server room, architectural enclosures around the servers, electrical power upgrades, new ceiling lighting fixtures, coordination of IT equipment, coordination of a new IT cooling system. The system that's up there is a couple Levert units, which is probably coming to the end of its lifecycle. The disposition of the existing Levert units that actually run, run the air conditioning up there. Under the floor modification to install some air dams. Specification for testing the server room to NFPA 2001. The bidding documents will be prepared of general construction, mechanical, electrical, bidding documents, specifications for the scope of the work approved by the department and Public Works. Bidding documents will be submitted for review, coordinate all the work with the department's computer equipment vendor, so there is some other people that are involved in this. For this amount, the engineer will attend a pre-bid meeting held at the site, review and respond to RFI's request for information during the bidding period, review and recommend a word of contract after a client verifies contractor's adherence to required submissions, and he will attend the pre-construction meetings and stuff. This is something that was actually on the capital budget. It's been there for a little while. This is actually to bring the server room up to date, if you will. The two Levert units are over on the one wall. They're two big gray units, if you've ever been in there, and, and we're proposing on getting rid of them and actually updating this, which I believe it was on the capital budget for, for a little while. So it's something that I think the IT department would definitely want done.
Yes, I, I just want to say that this is a project that we have discussed for some time, and I, I do think that it does need to be done. You're all aware of their room that we have, where the servers are in. It has a glass in front of it, so you can see it. We have, we're, we're taking up a lot of space, and we're air conditioning a lot of space that doesn't need to be air-conditioned or used. There's also been issues where we have had, the roof has leaked there, and so the configuration of it is not good, and all of that really does need to be addressed. So, you know, I, I think that this is a project that really does need to happen.
Well, thanks, Jack. I guess the rest of council is probably too young to remember this movie, but I, I remember, one of my favorite movies when I was younger was War Games, and they had this one scene where they had this computer called Whopper that sat there in this room, and every time I walk by our computer room, I think of that, of that scene, and it looked to me like our computer room was built for a time when, you know, Eniac or, or Whopper was in there. It, it's by and large empty now. I know it sits in that big glass bowl and makes it look like a fishbowl, and I'm sure at one time it was impressive with lots of lights and, and things. But when I think about the need, the perceived need to build a new building across the street on Orange Street, and then I look at that empty space, I wonder, or it seems to me, and always has seemed to me, that we could better use that space. So I guess my question to you, Jack, would be, is, is part of this consideration a reconfiguration of the space such that we can make use of the rest of the space that's in there that's just being, that's just sitting empty right now?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a mask on, so you can't see me chuckling under here when you talk about the space that was needed years ago for servers and everything, and, and that has declined. It is getting smaller, but the next agenda on the, the next order of business on the agenda is actually maybe going to use some of that space that's down there for the 911 stuff that we have. So that, that space definitely needs to be done. The air conditioning systems, like I say, the Levert units at one time were the Cadillac of the industry for a computer room, and it's, it's time to, you know, straighten it up, and let's, let's get that done. And I, I totally agree with Ms. Grace in the fact that one of my concerns is that we, we do get water comes through that ceiling, it could, it could damage a lot of items. And over top of that, up on the penthouse is actually the, the room where we have a lot of air handler units, and there is a lot of piping and everything up there. There is floor drains up there, but as everybody knows, if you ever had water damage at your house, it doesn't just stop, it did it drains, it goes everywhere. So that's, you know, something that we'd like to get into and straighten out.
This is, I would just like to make a comment on this that I, because it goes directly to what Mr. Zidic had mentioned, and that is, I think there are a really high priority need for facilities in Delaware County, is a facility study, you know, looking at what are our space needs, what space do we have available, you know, usage? Like, for example, I've heard several different options for where we can locate the 911 backup center, and I, I just feel like, before we plug them in at whatever place seems to be most convenient at the moment, I would very much like to make sure that we are sort of cataloging what all of our needs are and what might be best put in these different facilities. So I understand that there's lots of things that could be used, that that space could be used for, but I would ask that we all, and, and that, you know, Public Works and Facilities, put relocating things in any way that's going to cause, I mean, what you're talking about doing here for what is there right now, I understand, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we don't move forward with this project, but I would like to say that I'd like to put off re-outfitting space and spending tons of money doing it until we've had a comprehensive facility study done. You know, do what we need to do to make sure we're not, things aren't deteriorating and that we're maintaining what we have, but not making huge investments until we've had the opportunity to do that study.
I can, I've said, I think two meetings ago, you and Monica were elected to be the Facility Study Committee, so.
Two meetings ago was a lifetime ago, but I, and Monica and I have both been just a little bit distracted. I mean, you know, there's the selecting thing, and there's-
No, actually, I've been doing research on RFPs for facility studies that would be similar to ours from other cities, and so I'm getting that all together to Mary Ann so that we can go through it to figure out what would be the best one for us.
And I've, I've got, I mean, I've been talking to, to people as well about, you know, who would normally respond, who, who would normally, who would we normally look to, to do this kind of a, a study? So trying to figure out, you know, are we going to an engineering firm, are we going to an architectural firm, are we going to a firm that could do both, you know, who, who does these things? So we should have a conversation, Monica, but I just want to make sure that it's clear to our staff that we're looking to hold off on any major investments for new uses or relocated uses, driven by anything other than absolute necessity in the short term, until we, we can do this work.
Yes, and I, and Dr. Taylor and I have had discussions about this in looking at an RFP. In fact, I, I mentioned it to Jack several weeks ago, now that this is something that we were going to be moving forward with. I think what, what I'd like to hear myself, too, and what are we talking about with the 911 center, the backup, because this is another project that over the years, you know, we have a very limited backup, and I guess, maybe I'll hold my comments until we get to that piece. I'll, I'll hold my comments.
Okay, can I just ask one question about this contract? Can you just give a little background about how you came to select Gillan and Hartman for both this and the next project?
They, they've actually been involved with this. Like I said, this is, this is actually on the capital budget, and Gillian and Hartman had actually looked at this project before. We've worked with Gillian and Hartman for a while. They're a pretty good engineering firm, and they, they have done some work on this, looking to say, is it feasible or not? And that's what the, you know, their proposal was for, is they can come in there and hit the ground running. And like I said, this room's been on there for, for a while, and this is for the IT department. The necessary stuff we're doing isn't to expand this. Like I say, that's under the next agenda item that I have. This agenda item here is for the, the IT department itself, so it's something that was going to be done and just never, never got there.
I noticed the, in the capital budget, the entire project for this, the IT renovations, not the 911 center-
Sure.
Is, is $375,000 total for the whole project?
That's correct.
And I think this was a $45,000 estimate, which is a pretty high ratio, engineering to construction. Is there some reason that that's, you know, that the engineering for this project that is not actually that big is so high?
I don't, I don't have a calculator in front of me to actually figure out the percentage on that. I've probably got that information up in the office, but no, it could be a number of things because you are getting into specialty items with this. The, you know, the fee itself, we're talking, I believe, $45,000. Percentage-wise, the 375, you are right, that is exactly what's on the capital budget. In fact, I just, just-
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So before we move on to the next one, and maybe this is all part of that, but I'm, I'm concerned that if we haven't sorted out whether or not we're going to need, whether or not we think it's, it's wise to have the 911 backup center in that same space, without resolving that, how do we, how do we give direction to, to Gillan and Hartman with regard to just the renovations, if we're only going to use that space just for a server room? Presumably, we'd want to move the servers from smack dab in the middle of the room to a corner of the room, if we were going to use the space somewhere else. If we're going to fill it up with all other servers, you know, maybe it stays in the same spot. So do you have a, do you have a notion of, of, of order here, Mr. Beerling?
Well, the proposal I just, I just read you is strictly for the IT department. It's just a coincidence that both of these are coming in together, and this is something that the 911 center has, has talked to us about. This is something that they said, hey, you know, we'd like to cohabitate with the IT department in that area. The proposal that I read you is strictly to do upgrades for the IT department. The other proposals, what it would cost, because with the, with the 911 center going up there, there is a, a security, stuff that we would have to do, too, that would come under that proposal, and I'm sure that's Mr. Tom Tate, the engineer, would, would be looking at. With, with the IT department, everything's out in the open. I know there's probably some computers that are there for the 911 center that are, probably have some, some kind of security on them, I would think, because I was told one time evidently that there was a federal organization that has some computers up there, and it was a, you know, not a breach, but there was a, always a security problem that they thought they might have had. So these are actually two separate, separate standalone items. The one for, for the IT department, like I said, the Levert units are in pretty sad shape, and that, that needs to be done. And you're totally right, the servers that we have there now are much smaller than the servers that were probably there 25 or 30 years ago. When the, when we went to this size server and everything, I have no idea. The other proposal, or the other request for action agenda I have is, is the one that would bring it up for the 911 center.
Jack, can I, can I interrupt you for a second here? Can I, can I ask you, you know, this is another one, that this 911 center and needing more rigorous backup is something that's been discussed for quite some time. We have very limited backup right now that exists down in the telecommunications office.
That's correct.
And so I, I don't know, you know, what is being conceived here. Is this merely, not merely, but are we looking at, this would be housing, you know, the servers, the infrastructure to support 911, no matter where the guy, the telephones and the, and the call, and the call takers were sitting, or are they planning to have more people in that area? Do you know what's being conceived here?
I don't, I don't believe it is. I, I'm, I'm thinking that they want to have all their IT equipment, their servers and everything else up there. Their people, I think, would be located somewhere else.
Wherever, so there could be a different decision on, so this is putting the, the infrastructure that they would need to support it.
Yes.
Near, wow. Because, you know, I, I think what you're raising is absolutely right, that this is something that we're talking about, and there's been a number of different proposals on where this backup is going to be, and this is another one. And, you know, they're kind of, I don't want to minimize it back at the napkin, but that's what it feels a little bit like, because we just see different ones without having something that's been done more comprehensively. And if, if we're just talking about, you know, their computer equipment, that to me- that to me is somewhat of a different story. But another thing that has been raised is around security. The more people that have access to those rooms, you know, this is something that our auditors talk to us about a lot, you know, Baker Tilly, in terms of making sure that we have security around our systems. So these are the good questions to raise.
And that's. Agenda item number seven. Does anybody have anything for item number six before we continue our discussions on agenda item number seven? And and Mr. Beering, I don't think you need to read through agenda item number seven. I think we're far along, far enough along there. Does anybody have anything else for agenda item number six?
Well, no, but I guess I'm still just not really settled on whether this is the right time to go forward with this. I mean, if we don't really know where these, you know, these functions should be because we haven't done the facility study. I guess I'm just trying to get my head around the urgency, you know, I I I hear you on some of the needs, but is this something that has to happen now or can it happen? I don't know what the right number is. Christine, Monica, how how long would we need to wait until we might have a a facility study?
Mr. Madden, are you speaking about agenda item number seven, the the backup 911 or or the number six, the for the computer room renovations?
I think I'm really speaking about them both. I think it's relevant to six too.
I think we really have to look at them as separate items. If if 911 hadn't gotten ahold of me, I probably wouldn't have number seven, you know, to to bring before you today. Number six has been on the capital budget. That's something that we were doing in reference to the IT department itself. So I I think we we need to look at them separately. And and I agree that I can go back to Mr. Voice and and see his feelings on the 911 center. I'm I'm bringing before you what I was what I was talking to about. And that's that's the reason I'm here.
So is your point, Jack, is your point that the the footprint of the IT facility will be what it is regardless of what we do elsewhere?
I I I think most of the footprint would be what it is. I think we may be putting some walls in there or some kind of security around the servers. So somebody walking in wouldn't have access to them, which has been one of the things that I've talked to Mary Ann about before. And that is, you know, securing them in some way. You know, I I know we have key passes on there and and not everybody can get in there, but it's something that I always thought those windows should be blocked out. I don't think people should get off the elevator and see where a server room is, but that's just my my point. But I think it's something with what we're talking about on item six is something that needs to be done. And it wouldn't have been on the capital budget if it didn't need to be done. Item seven, if you want me to go back and gather some more information, I can do that. So.
Well, let's, I I think Mr. Madden's point is is a good one, though, in the following sense that that, I mean, in many senses, but I'll offer just a few. That's that that is what I'll call valuable real estate, right? It is at the government center. It is on a floor where lots of people can contact one another and and be in contact with one another. There are there's a finite amount of space we have at the government center to do things that can only be done in the government center. And, you know, if we did a space study, they may conclude, yes, you should absolutely have your servers at the government center, but they could sit in the basement. You know, for instance, in a secure area that that isn't one that the public would have access to. I don't know whether it's whether that's feasible or not. I'm I'm thinking of spaces that we have in the basement like the I think the isn't the intercommunity health department down there, or at least it was. We have the park police down there in a in a corner now. Well, I call it the basement. It's not really the basement, but.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think the very fact that we would be like blacking out windows is sort of a a flag to me that maybe that's not really where the server should be. You know?
So, but I also take the importance that, you know, hey, we want to make sure that our servers are both secure and that they are properly conditioned and air conditioned and and they're not being leaked upon and those sorts of things too. So you know, there's two powerfully competing elements we have here to fix things up that have, you know, perhaps needed to be fixed up for some time. And also to do something in a comprehensive and thoughtful way. So, you know, I I think it's it can be discussed more tomorrow, but we should be prepared to speak about that tomorrow. At least I'll want to be prepared. And and towards that end, I think it might be useful to have somebody at tomorrow's meeting from the IT department let us know sort of their perspective on the need for the proximity of these servers. Their perspective on the danger that they might be in, the status of, you know, their cert, their their view on sort of the current status of them. Is that is that something we think we can we could have somebody here, Mary Ann?
Yes, absolutely. I'll I'll get John Beck to be on.
Okay.
And Monica and Christine, in the, you know, limited time you've had to look at it so far, I mean, do you have a sense of how long it would take to complete a facility study?
Yes, at least from the studies that I've looked at, most of them with the amount of facilities we have, it's probably going to take about six months or so to complete it. And so I was hoping to have the I've found about 10 or so studies and I'm going to narrow it down to like five to get to Mary Ann and Jack and every and Bill to kind of review to figure out what would be the best mesh to fit what our needs are. And then I was hoping to have them ready us ready to go out for RFP by like maybe the mid-June meeting.
Understand, I mean, it's a six month process to do the work of of going in. And this assumes they can get into all the buildings and inspect them. And you know, it frankly, it would be ideal to be able to include Fair Acres, not so much the ongoing facilities there that are included. You know, can anticipated to continue to be used for the nursing home, but there's a lot of space at that campus that would have to be looked at for other county needs. So assuming they can get into everything that they need to get into, it would it would take about six months for them to do the work, but that you know, and if we're, there are, I wouldn't call them canned RFPs out there, but there but there are lots of model RFPs like this is not, we're not the first county or or widespread government or institution to do this. So we can get that together, I think, pretty quickly, but there will need, just like with the bids that we were talking about with the elevators, there's some time that it has to be out. So we can get it out in June, I think, you know, to go through the normal process and and Mr. Martin may be the most experienced person here with this and and Mr. Beering, but, you know, normally with an RFP process, it will take a couple of months to circulate it. You know, you could probably get it done in two months and get the results back and then get something going. But if we got this out in June, ideally, we would be contracting with somebody, I would think, in September, and then the six month period would be March.
Okay, just I I don't, I I think we've already gotten down a bit of a rabbit hole here, but just for purposes of thinking about the timeline and and what we would want to move forward with on on this particular item, I think that's helpful to understand.
And and just just so you know, Ms. Grace and I had discussed this before we got into the situation that we are right now. We were actually talking about this the end of February, beginning of March about actually doing, getting a study done with, you know, with the prison, with Fair Acres and stuff like that. But it's one of them things that it fell off the tip. We had discussed it though.
Okay, anything else for agenda item number six or seven? All right, thank you, Mr. Beering.
Thank you.
In the interest of brevity, I'm going to sort of combine the next three together, Dr. Taylor, if that's okay. And that is agenda items number eight, nine, and 10 are all amendments relating to the CDBG program. So we have Ms. Hill here to speak about eight, nine, and 10, specifically with regard to CDBG. I know she's on for number 11 too. But Ms. Hill, welcome to the, welcome to the program. If we could, I don't know if we can see you or if we're just going to to listen. There she is.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, Council. So the next three agenda items are requests that constitute a change to the county's Housing and Community Development Action Plan as it relates to the Community Development Block Program. And therefore, it requires public notice and council approval. The current uncommitted balance of CDBG funds is $404,754. And if council approves all of these requests, approximately $295,000 will be remaining available for project cost overruns in the contingency. So the first is Trainer Borough. In 2018, council approved a CDBG grant to the Borough for the installation of a sidewalk along Ridge Road. The grant was for $1,925, I'm sorry, $100,925. However, Pendot has since advised the Borough that the project is not feasible without significant improvements to the adjacent Marcus Hook Bridge, which are very costly and beyond the scope of this program. So as a result, they are withdrawing their application for funding for this project. And they have submitted a new request for roadway improvements along Chestnut Street from 9th Street to Township Line Road. This is a road reconstruction project that includes installation of new ADA accessible ramps, sidewalks, complete stormwater inlet adjustments, and complete roadway in repaving. So the action here is to cancel the Ridge Road project and approve a new Chestnut Street pedestrian improvement project in the amount of $130,064. The next is a request from.
If if I could miss, so maybe maybe now that you've presented it, maybe we could allow people to comment on each one of these, and then we'll move on to the next, if that's okay, or ask questions perhaps more appropriately.
That'd be great. And I'm just trying to catch up. So when you say that figure, was that the what's the net change versus their initial request?
It's about $30,000.
So it's $30,000 more or $30,000 less?
More, sorry.
Okay.
If if I understand this correctly, Ms. Hill, that Trainer had submitted something and and prior council said, yes, we should, we should go ahead and do that. That was the that was the Ridge Road sidewalk sidewalk installation. I think what you said is Pendot said you can't do that because you would need to do a whole lot of other work in order to to do that. So so that is being canceled. So we have this this money and I guess the suggestion is, well, let's, since we already offered it to Trainer, we should give Trainer something else. But but others, others might feel and council should, I I think from my own perspective, I would say, okay, well, if that one's not in there, then let's put in Trainer's request for the Chestnut Streetscape improvements and also consider that against any other items that might also be a a worthy consideration. Is that is is there something constraining us from doing it that way?
No, it's council's prerogative.
Okay.
I would just point out that one, you know, I I had reviewed that material and and I like so many things have been distracted and not been able to get to you with a question, but I I do did have some questions about this proposal, like, and would like to have the opportunity to to follow up on that and potentially see if if some of the other proposals that are out there might offer more utility.
Can I ask like a general sort of a global question about CDBG? I'm still figuring out how all these grants work. So these are two, this is from the 2018 allotment. And there was sort of a contingency leftover of $400,000 ish. Is that common? Does every year, is there sort of a pot leftover for overruns?
Yeah, we I try and have at least a 200, at least a $250,000 for project cost overruns, and that number will go up and go down as as projects come in for bid.
And is there a time element to when that money needs to be allocated?
There is a a time to when the money has to be expended. So we are always kind of under the gun to meet HUD expenditure requirements. And so we manage kind of the whole portfolio of projects in in this manner. So, for example, it may be possible for for Trainer to come back in a year, a year and a half and say, we've we've done our work with Pendot, we're ready to come back with this project. And we've always said, you know, municipalities want to tend to hold on to the dollars that get awarded to them. And we're always trying to push it towards projects that are eligible and ready to go in order to meet our HUD requirements.
So for instance, is there still 2017 money out there that is on is unassigned?
In some cases, yes, unassigned. The the total pot, the total unassigned, unallocated dollars is that 404,000.
Well, I see that's from all years.
All years, yeah. That's not one years, right? And one of the things to mention, Linda, make sure that you mentioned to council, there is a certain amount that we have to be within a certain spend.
That's correct. We can't have one more than one and a half our 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 grant each year HUD does a test and we 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 work to meet that expenditure guideline.
I'm not saying spend this money. I just I just want you to understand that.
Well, I I mean, I'm not familiar with this world, but most grant programs have a spend down buy, and if you don't, you lose it. And so that pot probably has 2017, maybe 2016 dollars in it that have to go out, that have to go out. So is that a factor here?
Yes, it's always a factor, yes. Should I move on?
Well, I I'd only add, I mean, I I I just going back to Mr. Zidic's comments about evaluating the project in context with other projects that are coming up. I think there's there's merit to that, but I also think that we've tried to maintain some degree of equity about funding allocations to various municipalities. And if because of reasons that, you know, Pendot says that the initial project wasn't really realistic, I I I want to make sure that we're thinking also about, you know, if if our housing development, our department, excuse me, house, bah, sorry, if Linda's department, so many acronyms. If they, you know, view this to be a a project that has merit, I realize it ultimately falls to council, but I do want to just take into account that Trainer missed out on this this allocation in the past.
Understood. Yeah, I mean, I I think I know when I analyze the the CDBG allocations, there are a number of metrics I look at. One of them is the amount of money that municipalities have gotten in the past and how that money expenditure is relative to the the number of folks in poverty. So when I look at Trainer, for instance, they get, they have gotten over the last, I think it's 10 years, about $1,500 per person that's in poverty. And if you compare that to, I think Aston got $84 per person that's in poverty. Yaden got something like $104 per person and and per person that's in poverty over that same amount of time. So, you know, one of the things that I have considered is trying to make sure that the the money is is spread out around the county to those areas that are most in need. And so because Trainer has had a relatively high proportion of monies relative to others, it doesn't mean that they should be disqualified. But I think automatically assuming that we should roll it over to them is is kind of a a concern to mind. I think we should consider their proposal, but we should consider alongside any others that we could also use the money for, and then council could make a determination as to where they think the the money should be spent.
I think that's fair. You you've been really a liaison to this program for the last few years, so I I I wasn't aware that there's been that that disparity. So I appreciate that input.
Just to follow up on that, Linda? Question. So for this amount that would be from the 2018 allotment, what is our time constraints on this? So like, how quickly does council need to look through those previous proposals to figure out who we would like to?
So I would just say, as soon as possible, if if council were not to consider this, we would take the original allocation, not approve this, we would take this original allocation, put it kind of back into the pot and council could reallocate this money during the 2020 program if they choose.
And I'm sure Trainer has applications. I haven't looked at it, but I'm sure they have an application for programs to be funded in the 2020 ask.
That's correct.
No, I would I think my preference would be we can certainly vote to do this or table it, but you know, to request that we schedule some time with Ms. Hill and anybody else she needs to bring in from the planning department to go back. You know, the CDBG grants, just to be clear to anybody who's watching this, this is a meeting where we're dealing with the regular process of governing that has to go on every year. And and the CDBG grants would ordinarily be well further along their process, I think, in a regular year. But a lot of resources aren't available in the same way they would normally be, and resources have had to be redirected to deal with the very real challenges of this public health emergency. And there's lots of things that we do in the ordinary course that, you know, elections, for one, for one, that are just absorbing a tremendous amount of time. So things that we would have liked to have done and we fully would have expected to be doing. I mean, I know, for example, that Ms. Hill's department has been really involved in looking specifically at housing things. And and there's a lot that's been going on around that because of the challenges with you know, the people's income. you know, the people's incomes and, and, and what's that, that's meant for a housing crisis. So I would ask that we get some time as a council to be reintroduced to those CDBG projects and make some decisions.
Linda, can you remind us what, what the timeline is? What, where are we on the process for 2020?
So Council has a list of projects that came in from municipalities and nonprofits and you know, we'd like to get our, our program year, it typically starts July 1. And there is some time for HUD to process our application. They've waived deadlines at HUD for this program here, so there isn't quite a deadline. But, you know, I think we, and I've spoken with Dr. Taylor about this, we, we certainly want to get these projects underway and, and take care of the administrative duties that we have with HUD so that when July 1 comes, there is not a delay with the nonprofits and so that we are able to have our municipalities have some of their engineering and that work underway for these projects. So without further delay, I would say, but there is no drop dead date.
So Linda, unless it creates some sort of administrative issues, I, I, I support the idea of looping this particular project into the mix for our 2020 conversation. I think it, it just, the, the time, the timing works out pretty nicely that we can think of this in a more holistic sense with the projects that are in front of us across our 49 municipalities. We can take into account equity of how we're allocating these dollars per person in poverty is, as Mr. Zid excited. These are the sort of metrics that we like to look at. And, and since we're at this point in the timeframe, I think we can do so in an effective way.
Understood.
And just to confirm, like the, the discerning factor here is that this isn't just they need more money for a project that was approved already. This is a wholly different project, right? All right. Okay. Thanks.
Which segues us nicely into Agenda Item Number Nine, I guess it is, which I think is an additional amount. Correct, Ms. Hill?
That's correct. Clinton M. Burrow is requesting an increase in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven dollars for a parking lot reconstruction project. This is a situation where bids came in higher than the anticipated amount and by almost sixty thousand dollars. The total project cost is one hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. The Borough has agreed to contribute twenty-seven eight hundred six dollars to complete the project. And if Council approves that this increase would bring the CDBG share to one hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. And for this project, I am requesting your approval to move forward.
Any questions or comments from Council on this Agenda Item Number Eight? So this was just, it costs more to do than what they thought initially?
Yes. That's correct.
When you, when we hear this again tomorrow, can we understand the numbers that'll be left over without the Trainer project in there so that we, you know, the, how that affects the, US Head said there would be two ninety-five remaining, but now there'll be some other figure. Thanks.
Roughly it'd be about thirty thousand more, right? I think Linda said it's, it's about thirty thousand net increase versus the old project, right? So did I do that right, Linda?
I, I, yes, I think so, but I don't do math in public, so I will.
Neither do I.
I, I completely, I completely support you in that very prudent decision. With this second project where it's cost more than intended, you know, they've asked for additional funds. Is it, and I know this happens because it happens typically, it's miracle when it doesn't, is, is the municipality still matching basically what they're asking us to put in? Or are they asking us to find all of the shortfall? Because normally in these projects, I know in another Providence, when I was voting on them, when we had shortfalls like this, we'd usually get funding for, you know, we had some kind of a match. Understand?
Yeah. So match is typically for the municipality, the cost of the engineering, the constru-, the engineering, the construction oversight and basically the project management. That's what the municipality brings to the table. In this case, the Borough has agreed to contribute cash to the project. My twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and six dollars.
Thank you.
Leverage, not match, I would say.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So is that number increasing for the increase here or is that number staying the same?
Not sure. So the Borough is actually putting in additional cash to the project.
Yeah. So this is as a result, I mean, they're putting in additional cash over and above what they would ordinarily have paid on this project. So they would have covered all the engineering and project management and stuff, and the county would have paid the balance. The project is costing more. The Borough is now coming back and saying, we can put in this twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars, et cetera. Will the county make up the difference? So they are in effect saying, we've got skin in the game. We're willing to commit more resources to get this done. Okay. Thank you.
That's correct. And the same is true for Agenda Action Item Number Ten. That is a request from Middletown Township for an increase in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars to their grant for street improvements to East Old Baltimore Pike. This project's been out to bid twice now and the scope has been revised to consider the high bids that came in. The township is increasing its contribution to the project, the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And in addition, they've agreed to utilize their public work staff to further maximize the use of the CDBG and the township dollars, which is very helpful. This increase would bring the total project cost to one hundred forty-five thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars, and I am requesting your approval for this.
Any other questions or comments from Council on Agenda Item Number Ten?
Just trying to do the numbers here. So they have increased their cash contribution by X. And we are increasing our net contribution by what?
We are increasing our net contribution for Middletown by twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
And they're putting, they're increasing their amount by how much?
They are increasing their amount by forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Plus, plus the use of their, plus contribution of additional labor.
Yeah.
Got it.
And Linda, again, this twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars would come off of the roughly four hundred and five thousand dollars that we have outstanding?
That's correct.
Okay. So I've got to set about three forty-seven left. I do math in public.
Okay.
But we'll see tomorrow whether, we'll, we'll see whether that actually matches up when somebody puts a calculator to it.
Okay. Linda, can I just, can you give, say in one sentence what this project is? It was a little hard to tell exactly what it is.
So it is a total street reconstruction of, of this residential street. Excuse me?
It's basically a paving project?
Yes, it's paving sidewalks, curbs, milling, manhole rehabilitation, traffic protection, new curbs, milling sidewalk and manhole sewer adjustment and rehab.
Okay. Thank you.
Very exciting.
Mr. Vatic, before we, before we move on, if, assuming we're ready to move on to the next agenda item, I'm, I just wanted to respond to, you know, these Zoom meetings are kind of interesting. Ms. Coogan, it's harder for her to raise her hand, so she's put a chat item out asking, are we tabling any of these items? And I guess what I would like to do is it's okay to make motion kind of globally to clean up the agenda a little bit. Or at least suggest a motion, and I can take them, I have three, but I could do them one at a time or.
Why don't we do, why don't we do the motions one at a time? I think it's a good idea, Ms. Ruth, there, Ms. Coogan. If you could do them one at a time, I think that would be the, the better way to record the votes.
I would like to make a motion that we table the nine-one-one request and until we get some more information. I think it's fine to say it'll come back tomorrow, but I have to say I'm not necessarily knowing the other discussions that have gone on, I'm not inclined to, to have it on the agenda tomorrow. That would, so that's my motion.
So a motion to table Agenda Item Number Seven. Do we have a second for that motion?
And just to be clear, is it a tabling or is it removing from the agenda for tomorrow?
I, you're right. I think it's a motion to remove it from the agenda for tomorrow.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Do we have any questions or comments?
No, I, I think I support that. I, I don't think I heard anything in our conversation that made it seem like we needed to move forward now, like that can't at the very least wait two weeks, but probably likely more. So yeah, I'd, I'd be fine removing it from the agenda.
I guess I'll, I'll only offer that. I've had relatively extensive conversations. For some reason, backup plans are, are something that, that interest me. I think because I fear like what the heck would happen if we didn't have it in place. There would be T-shirts out there with tire treads over them, with my name under them perhaps. So I have had a conversation with Tim about this before and one of the things that's been interesting through this COVID-19 crisis is how the local counties have worked together. And it strikes me as foolish that Montgomery County would have a backup center and Chester County would have a backup center and Delaware County would have a backup center. If we all need a space to answer telephones and do things, you know, there might be the possibility that two counties could get together instead of each of us having something that's going to be sitting empty most of the time. Maybe there's a way for us to work together and, and have one of them that could serve multiple counties. So I don't know whether that's possible or not, but I have had that conversation with Mr. Boyce and so I would be in favor of removing this, but I do think it is something that is imperative that we get on and try to figure out what we would do if there were an emergency. And, you know, Chester County came to our rescue once. I don't want to keep going back to that well unnecessarily. If we do decide that, hey, they've got a, they've got a facility and they would be willing to let us use it in case, you know, a lightning bolt hit ours. We should probably enter some, into some sort of formal arrangement where we pay them a, a rent for that. You know, that's what other backup centers charge and do. And then we would have claim to it as well. So again, I'm in favor of removing this from the agenda, but do want to make sure that we get on this so we have an answer in place.
Yeah, I, I, I do agree with that. And I think one of my concerns and why I would like to remove it from the agenda for tomorrow is we've had, I mean, I personally have also had discussions and I know Ms. Schaefer has as well with Mr. Boyce going into possible alternative scenarios. And I think we're also doing this. You know, there's, there's very good reason, especially right now. And if we have a, a continuing either, you know, in opening counties, there's a continuing escalation of this public health emergency or other things where being able to communicate with the other counties is of great priority and especially their first responders. You know, this gets us into the whole radio system issue. And we've had discussions about where are there, where do we have the towers and what is the, the fiber backbone? And I think this needs to be a comprehensive discussion. And one of Mr. Boyce's strengths is his ability to sort of on the fly. I mean, it's, it's what he, why he makes a great emergency services coordinator, you know, director. He really, it has this tremendous ability, I think, to make things work under really tight circumstances. But this is a pretty substantial commitment of resources and I would like to take a longer view than I think he often has time to do. And certainly by moving it off the agenda for tomorrow, you know, I would make that a priority to, to do that.
Any other questions or comments from Council with regard to the motion to remove this from the agenda? Mr. Martin, is this the proper form for this motion? Is this, is this in order?
You can feel free to proceed.
Okay. Oh, I guess we'll call for a vote then on the motion to remove Agenda Item Number Seven from the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Coogan, let's take that off the agenda. Ms. Ruth, did you have any other motions of this ilk?
I think I, I only, to sort of follow up on our discussion and I will ask Ms. Coogan to see, I, I thought maybe there were three, but I think I'm down to two. And this would be the second one. That if the sense is that we do not want to approve the request, that we, I guess, really amend item number eight for the agenda. So it would be, you know, to cancel the funding. So it would be solely for the purpose and then Ms. Hill, I correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be at this point solely for the, the motion would be amended to cancel the funding of one hundred thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars awarded to Trainer Borough for the Ridge Road sidewalk installation. Period. And that, you know, with the understanding, and I don't know that we need to put this in the motion, but for our own benefit, that with the understanding that the Chestnut Street proposal would be added into the pool of applicants to be decided this year.
I'd second that. You're, you're on mute, Brian.
All right. I have homeschooling going on, so I'm trying to keep it. Have not everybody listened to that. So we have a motion to amend Agenda Item Number Eight as read by Ms., Ms. Ruth, and seconded by Mr. Matt. And any questions or comments from Council with regard to this amendment?
No, and I'd only comment, as we said a moment ago, that this isn't, you know, anything against necessarily the project or certainly Trainer. But since we are at this useful point in the process for the 2020 CDBG allocations, I think it's a good time to loop this all in so that we can think about it holistically and be equitable in how we're allocating these dollars per impoverished person within these municipalities, among other metrics we looked at.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments from Council? So I'll call for a vote then on the motion to amend Agenda Item Number Eight as read by Ms. Ruth. Are all those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I would just ask Ms. Coogan, I, I I think that covered the items where you were asking us about, were we going to table or amend anything? Is there anything else that you were, were, had a question about?
They were the only two.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to, I think we are on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, Ms. Hill. This is with regard to a grant application to the DCED for fifty thousand dollars with a forty thousand dollar in kind and ten thousand dollar match. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, you have to. The final request, putting on my planning hat, is approval for the County Planning Department to submit a request to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for preparation of a corridor master plan for Route Thirteen, also known as Chester Pike. The planning staff has been working with five municipalities along the Pike for a number of months now to help develop a cohesive vision for this important corridor. The municipalities have agreed to work together with the department in the development of a corridor plan. And it would examine and analyze existing land use, rail and bus, transit, pedestrian, bike access, land use and economic and demographic data to really shape an overall plan to identify improvements and enhancements to the area and assist with the overall revitalization of the corridor. The final product would be a plan outlining an overall vision for the corridor that's supported by each of the communities. And it would include extensive outreach and citizen engagement. Because of the high level of coordination that's necessary, there will be an engineering component. And because of the comprehensive scope of the document, we are estimating a total project cost of a hundred thousand dollars with fifty thousand coming from the DCED grant, an in-kind county match of forty thousand dollars from planning staff. And we also have a commitment of ten thousand dollars cash contribution from the five municipalities. So I just kudos to these municipalities for forming this partnership and supporting it, not just with their participation, but their financial contribution. And also I would say, if I can, kudos to the planning staff for providing the support and kind of marshaling these communities who each have, you know, different governing bodies, priorities and resources. So I'm asking approval to submit this application to DCED.
Yeah, and here, here, I, I totally agree. I mean, anytime we see municipalities working together across borders, we've talked before about how extraordinarily fragmented Delaware County is. It's, as far, we, we actually did some work on that pre-COVID, and I think we found that there was only one county in the United States that had more municipalities per square mile than Delaware County. And it was a county in North Jersey. So it's something that we always need to be thinking about is how can our municipalities work together across municipal boundaries to be thinking in this sort of a, a longer term way. So I applaud their work. I don't really have any other questions on it, but I appreciate the, the point.
Linda, is this, the, the, the entire forty thousand dollar match is all in kind? No cash from the county?
That's correct.
Okay. And this is in its infancy. There's not, we're just applying for the grant now, right? We, nothing has been moved forward yet.
No, other than just coordination and getting everyone to agree and kind of getting a vision for what the plan would look like. We've been, they, staff has been meeting for, you know, starting back in the summer. last summer to kind of get this effort underway. And I think they're really on the right track.
Yeah, I want to just echo what Kevin was saying about these, you know, often you'll start to, with a project like this that brings, gets everybody working together, knowing each other, and it, it blossoms into much more. So fully, fully supportive of this and, and hope it does blossom into much more in terms of coordinated planning.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments with regard to agenda item number 11? All right, I think that might do it for you, Ms. Hill. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, stay safe.
Thank you.
Dr. Taylor, you want to take over here?
Yes, I guess we'll have Ms. Garrison talk about agreements, contracts and amendments with the human services providers of services.
Thank you. Good morning. The first request I have is for, with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the county's continuum of care grant. The Office of Adult and Family Services through Human Services is actually the coordinated applicant for the grant. There's 24 projects countywide, six of which are managed through our office to balance or done through nonprofits. The total amount of funding received by Delaware County is $5,163,533. Of that, $1,503,483 goes to Delaware County through Human Services to Adult and Family Services. The balance goes to other providers. This is a decrease in the amount that comes directly to Adult and Family Services and pass through providers. However, I did confirm with the Adult and Services Administrator that the overall amount to the county is the same. There was some underspending with the programs that were being managed through our office. So we then put that, those funds back into the pot per se, so they can be utilized in other programs. Those additional monies are going to be utilized for new supportive housing program for the county, but it is still for county residents. The programs that are managed through Human Services are for the homeless management information system, which is a data system to track where individuals are at, make sure they get the services they need and the housing supports they need. The, there's also several providers that do programs related to permanent and supportive housing as well as wrapped re-entry programs and also case management and coordinated entry into the system. And that's spread among various providers with whom we have contracts through Human Services. The next three requests are to amend contracts with Adult and Family Services. This was an oversight in the part of our, our office. What had happened up until, until recently or until the block grant had been in effect, what would happen is a lot of programs for Adult and Family Services, because those fundings were historically cut for the homeless population, we were able to fund those services with mental health dollars. So those services would be contracted through the Mental Health Department versus Adult and Family Services. With the block grant, when it came to play, since the funding could be moved around, there really was no need to continue to do it that way. So starting with the fiscal year 1920 contracts, we made the decision as a department to remove whatever's being funded by it. You know, for example, in this case, or being funded originally by Mental Health, move them into the Dalton Family Services contracts as they were Adult and Family Services programs. Unfortunately, by complete oversight, several of the programs were left out with the Mental Health Partnerships as well as Horizon House. There's also for Salvation Army, there's a program that's being funded in court by Health Choices reinvestment dollars, and that now also has separate contracts. So this is just to correct the original contracts. The programs are still the same. The amount of overall dollars through Human Services is the same, it's just moving it to the correct contract. The next request is to apply for the comprehensive opioid stimulant and, excuse me, and substance abuse type-based program. And this is to bring medical assisted treatment into the prison to, excuse me, to add Suboxone to the group of medications the prison currently provides. If awarded, we are requesting 1.2 million, it would be over a three-year period. It's also going to allow for certified recovery specialists as well to work with these individuals to help hopefully transition them into the, into the community without having continued substance abuse issues and give them the best chance to restart and not end up back in the criminal justice system. The next request also for the Drug and Alcohol Department is the State Department of Drug and Alcohol has asked us to amend all of our contracts to include an attestation on behalf of the providers, basically stating that they will not use marijuana as a treatment for mental health and or substance abuse issues with the federal funds that are coming in. And also the state monies, the state is not allowing that as an appropriate use of those funds and they're not, not permitting the contracts with providers who do use the monies for those purposes. So this is just to amend the Drug and Alcohol contracts to include that appendix. And finally, the last request is for the community hospital, hospital integration program, the CHIP, for lack of a better word. We're asking to apply for monies to start traumatic, traumatic brain injury program. There's three individuals currently there, Delaware County residents. They're at Norristown State Hospital. And unfortunately, these individuals fall between the cracks of our system because they have traumatic brain injury. They're not intellectually disabled because their current intellectual issues are resulted from traumatic brain injury, but they also don't fall in the mental health system because they don't have a diagnosed mental health issue. So therefore, by storing this program, we hopefully, if approved by the state, we'll be able to move these individuals into a home for this, this kind of house, I said, for individuals. And that would get them out of Norristown State Hospital.
Sandy, could I rewind back a couple to when you were talking about the expansion for MHD treatment out of George W. Hill? That is something that you, you know, that we've been talking about a lot and we've been working on to expand. I guess I'm surprised that it's at the point of a contract awarding.
I'm sorry, I
Can you just clarify?
This is for our, this is my, my request to have permission so we can apply for the grant.
I got it. Okay. So the grant that we've been talking about
We've been talking about, right? This is my official request to ask permission to apply for that.
Understood. Okay. So, yep, supportive.
Can I just ask, have we seen an executive summary on that?
Um, we, I don't have, I think there's still some discussions taking place as I understand it from Laura Fedors, the Drug and Alcohol Administrator, between the county and G O. Since this involves a jail, I think they're still trying to work some issues out to make sure
I'm just really kind of following up on Mr. Madden's comment. And, you know, because I've been following all of those emails as well. And I thought if I've missed an executive summary, I'm sorry, I certainly want to see it. So
Right. I will ask that anything we have currently be forwarded at this point. I mean, it was obviously in draft form, but I will ask that any executive summary, anything else we have at this point be forwarded.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll state the obvious. I want to see that program up and running as, as soon as we can practically do so. But I just want to make sure I understand by this approval here, we're not committing ourselves to any specifics around who implements the program or any of the other details that haven't yet been worked out. We are just like, what, how general is the approval that we're making here for the grant?
We are just, I mean, my request is just to approve the submission of the grant. Obviously, you guys will all see the grant in final form, our application, I should say, in final form before it's submitted. We have to discuss obviously with providers. I know one of the ones we talked about is Prospect Crozier, because we used him in the past. We'll have to work with them to see if there's something feasible. We can put that into the agreement as I've always understood it. Even if we discuss the provider in the agreement, if at the time of contracting, we end up going with a different provider, I believe we can still work that out with the notification of the state. I think it was more to the overall concept of the program and what we're going to do versus specifics on providers. But I can confirm that for tomorrow.
So at this time, all council would be doing is committing themselves to the general concept of, of having this program and, and seeking grant support.
Right.
Is, is that, I, I, I just want to be clear on that, that that is true or I'm saying is not true. But if we are submitting a grant application, the grant application is going to say we're doing certain things.
Right.
And so that's why I'm saying I would like, and from, for the jail oversight board is the role I'm thinking about here and talking about this, in that we would want to see what that summary is. Because that's whether regardless of who a provider is, is what are we saying that we want to see happen?
Right. And I can absolutely get what we have up to this point before tomorrow, the draft of it. And I know, again, there's like we've discussed, there's some issues that are still being finalized. But I can get, make sure we have a draft form of where it stands as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or?
You mind if, I had a question too. Do you mind if I ask you a question? I have a question about what the Office of Drug and Alcohol is doing. And, and what I'm hearing is saying that they're, they're not going to allow funding for the use of marijuana in terms of mental health. So is that, so like using medical marijuana, is that what they're saying you would not, a provider would not be able to do that?
Correct. Any provider that they're funding, as I understand it, any provider that the state or federal funds are coming or being utilized, are not allowed to use medical marijuana in the treatment of mental health and or drug and alcohol issues.
What's, sorry, what's driving that? What is that a, at what decision level is that occurring? Is that a state?
I believe they're linking it in the, um, information DDP sent to us, they're linking it back to the Code of Federal Regulations, section 75.3 requiring that the Health and Human Services, quote, federal funding is expanded in full accordance with US statutory requirements. And I think they're saying that based on the fact that marijuana is on a federal level, not allowed for purchase or distribution. They're linking it back to that, as I understand it.
It, it's a policy determination made by the current Department of Justice, which is imposed via regulation onto the state. So the state needs in order to stay in compliance to push those regulations down the county level.
Okay, so this isn't something that originated in Delaware County, is what I'm getting at. This is something that's coming from the Department of Justice.
Right, and it's through our State Department of Drug and Alcohol that's requiring the counties to implement it in their contracts.
Well, just another reminder why we need to, you know, clean up our federal and state laws and get them in, in alignment on, on this issue.
Do you know, and maybe, are there any such prohibitions if you're looking at, you know, looking at OHMSAS funding on mental health, looking at on the mental health side? Are they, are there those prohibitions or maybe you don't know that?
My understanding is this is going to be in all of the contracts in fiscal year 2021. But Drug and Alcohol, since, you know, DDP was saying that it had to be effective immediately, my understanding is that going forward for the 2021 contracts, this will be an appendix for all Human Services contracts. Because I think it's not just for the Drug and Alcohol funding. And that's who's bringing to our attention at this point, but for any, you know, the federal funding. But, you know, again, is
Yeah, that's what it sounds like if it's coming down from DOJ, that's what
Right.
it sounds like.
Mary Ann, thanks for honing in on that. I didn't
That one.
There's a lot thrown at us at once and I missed that. So thank you.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you're welcome. Yeah.
Well, perhaps the DOJ will change its tune in 2021.
Hopefully.
Anything else, Ms. Garrison or for Ms. Garrison? All right, thank you, Ms. Garrison. Moving on to the next agenda item, and I don't have mine printed, I go from 12 to number 22. So unless we want to skip the next 10, I'm going to need help here.
I believe the next agenda item is also, Ms. Garrison.
Okay.
For, to look at the agreement with child guidance.
Correct. And this is the same thing with the marijuana attestation, but this is to just include that for the contract between the Human Services Drug and Alcohol Department and Child Gun, God in truth.
Any questions for Ms. Garrison with regard to agenda item number 13?
Just thank you for breaking it out. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Thank you.
Looks like Mr. Hudek is thinking about coming to talk with us. He's not quite sure.
He might be getting picked up by aliens based on that sound.
It didn't sound good, did it?
We still have Mr. Hudek.
All right, we are, agenda number 14 is to purchase a Chevy Tahoe from Whitmoyer Auto Group under the Co-Stars contract. Good morning, Mr. Hudek. You want to tell us a little bit about this?
Good morning. We have a need in park police for extra vehicles with what's going on. We have some vehicles stationed in other places. We usually don't have them. I've been getting a lot of requests for additional vehicles. I've repurposed a couple other department vehicles to the park police, and we're still kind of short on what they need. So at this point, I'm not taking anything out of service. I'm going to add this additional vehicle to the park police. And then when everything settles down, we'll reevaluate their, their fleet.
Fair enough, though, once we buy this and we, when everything settles down and we reestablish the need, presumably we can't give this back, right?
No, no, we, we will actually take something else out of service.
It, I, I guess I'm a little incredulous, given the amount of, the amount of activity that's not going on. For instance, that community service that we don't have additional vehicles available to, that we could lend to the park police during this, during their increased time of need.
And I do, I have vans, I have cars, but I don't have anything with emergency lights and, and to do the job that they need to do. As I said, I have probably 50 vans, I have 40 cars sitting around. We have a lot of vehicles not being used. This, this is actually in last year's capital request. I just didn't do anything because of the slowness of the manufacturer getting out the police vehicles. I've ordered a couple of vehicles last August that I still haven't seen, which is why I didn't put in for this in the beginning of the year. I was waiting for Ford to catch up, Chevy to catch up with what they were putting out. I'm ordering vehicles in 2019 that I'm not seeing yet in 2020. By the time I get them, they're a year old. So this is actually on my capital request from last year. I just held on so that I could be more efficient with the vehicle when we were ready to buy.
One of the things that I, I do know with the park police, one, we're an area where they really are seeing increased activity is what, looking at the, the, the trails, the parks that we have been developing. And when we, you know, first, you know, a few years, you know, first we're doing more of this expansion, we really were not doing the kinds of patrolling that we, that we should be doing. This is our property, the trails are our, there are parks. And I, I do know that the park police, there, there's a much more activity out in, I'll say, out in the field than there had been previously. And my experience has always been with Superintendent Mahoney and with Director Hudek here, that they really have, I think, been conservative in their, in their approach to, to the, to the number of vehicles that are needed. And, you know, I've been talking to Scott, you know, a lot about this, the, the work that they're being required to do.
So I'm looking at our capital budget and it looks like every year, there's about $500,000 in the budget for motor vehicles. I'm curious, is there, when we're, when the capital budget is being put together ordinarily in the past, does, is that broken out? I mean, does, does the executive director or council or somebody see kind of what the plan is for all of these?
Yes. What we would do every year is sit down with Brian, the former budget director and I would, and this new budget director and I will, sit down with Brian, go over what are the new, the vehicles that he needs to, that he's requesting replacement. And Brian certainly will speak about this too, but, you know, we have over 300 vehicles in our fleet. And I believe Brian does a good job at really circulating them, you know, bringing in new vehicles, taking ones that are, you know, have, you know, certain mileage, giving them to other folks. So we do go over the detail. You will see each year what the detail is on what's being requested.
And, and is this particular vehicle accounted for in one of, in last year's planning or this year's planning? In that detailed budget? Yes, that's what I'm understanding.
It was in last year's, yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Just one more question. Does council see that breakdown ever in the past? Or does that, like, that level of detail not go up to council?
It, it does. And, and, you know, I think whatever level of, yes, it absolutely does. Yeah, the detail that I get is, you know, what the capital requests are, any request for additional positions, any, any, yes, you will, you will have all of that detail.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we did in the past, although in fairness to Ms. Grace, I was invited to come to the, to the meetings that she would have with the department heads. But I don't know as a, as an ordinary course that we would get a breakdown of the, of, of the entire amount for a given department, either on a department spend or on a capital spend. If we asked for it, I think we could, we could obtain it. But I'm not sure that it was dispersed as a, as an ordinary course of dealing.
I mean, as, uh, just an aspirational statement, um, in my opinion, that should be part, that detail should be a part of the budget we put together every year, and it should be online. And everybody should be able to see that.
Yes, it was not done that way. Um, it was done that when there were capital requests, I, um, I would give it to the chairman of council and the request and any different additions to the budget, such as, um, you know, new hires, those kinds of things. Um, and you're right, there could be much more detail on our budget. And, um, I anticipate that we would be doing that this year. Um, and that's a whole other thing, but I've spoken to Jeff Schott about, um, I, I'd like to see that we have a much more consumer-friendly, uh, presentation. You know, the citizens, the residents are the consumers, uh, really consumer-friendly presentation. So, you know, certainly not only for you, but for everyone to see all of that detail. So that is my plan, um, for the twenty twenty one budget.
Great. Thank you. That's great to hear.
Two, two things as far as that goes also. Things may change. I, I'm, I'm tasked with doing this budget, uh, in July and August is when I usually go around to the directors and see, you know, we go over their fleet. This is what you have. This is what I feel needs to be replaced. Just from what I'm seeing, I think I've explained to, to council before, things may change. Um, if there's an accident, if there's another need, uh, if we need a pickup truck instead of a car. Uh, things do change within, within the capital budget. Um, but I try to stay within that capital. And, and I haven't requested any additional capital, uh, myself, um, year to year. Um, the other thing was in the beginning of the year, a budget had come to me and asked that if we could break this up into quarters, uh, as far as the new vehicle replacement goes, uh, which isn't a problem at all. And then I try and give them an idea of, uh, we need, you know, the, we need to replace these in the summer. Uh, I think I've explained before, I do a lot of the sheriff's vehicles, uh, at the end of the year, um, because the people that outfit with emergency vehicles, with the cages, uh, the lights, sirens, stuff like that, they tend to be less busy towards the end of the year. So I can order them, have them dropped off, get them built real quick. Whereas if I order them in the beginning of the year, they may sit somewhere for two months before they can get to them, uh, to do the, the upfitting. Um, so I, I try to break it down that way. Um, now, like I said, budget had asked that I break it down into quarters. Uh, for the first quarter, I didn't request any capital. Um, I, and like I said, I'm going to buy this truck off of last year's capital because it was in, in my plan for, for this year's budget. But I don't know, depending on what, you know, what, what goes on in the future, I may not need the capital this year. Uh, I can probably work with everything that I have, depending on what's opening and, and what's going on. So first quarter, I didn't request any, any capital, um, to be spent. The second quarter, I don't see spending any capital on vehicles. Uh, and then we'll go from there after the first half of the year.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hudak or anything else on agenda item number fourteen? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have agenda item number fifteen. We have Mr. Weinhardt, who's going to present on uh, the continued use of Kinetex Fire and Safety, uh, Fire and Life Safety Experts on Co-Stars Contract Number four, four, zero, 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 one, six, four, three, five.
Good morning. I'm asking to have approval to the contract to use Kinetic Fire and Life Safety, Co-Star Contract Number Four, Four, Zero, 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 One, Six, Four, Three, Five, to perform the annual inspection of the fire alarm system, which includes sprinkler stand pipe, extinguishers, kitchen suppression, and the annual monitoring agreement contract with Kinetics for the period of May sixth, two thousand and twenty to May fifth, two thousand and twenty one. The amount is fifty one thousand, six hundred and seventeen, subject to solicitor's approval.
Can I just ask a couple of questions about this more? Because I, I don't, I, I'm unfamiliar with this. Is this the same company that we used, um, have been using?
Yes, we've been using them for about four years now.
And so at the end of a contract period, you put it into Co-Stars and, and it, it just so happens the same company came back out as the best, uh, option? Or is it the only game in town?
Well, there are other games, but this is on the state contract, so we piggyback off of that.
Okay. And is it, um, the way that they deliver their services, is it, um, you know, they're, they're constantly in the building? So I guess it's all sixty four properties? I guess it's all of our properties.
Yes.
And, um, and so are, are they're not able to come into, are they coming into the building during this pandemic or buildings?
They will, because it's life, fire, safety.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you.
Are there, are there other, uh, contractors who also are on Co-Stars? Or is this the only contractor that's on Co-Stars?
I'm not sure.
So, uh, Mr. Weinhardt, um, have, have you seen me, you've seen this game before where I then looked to see if there, there are political donors? When I, when I wonder why things aren't bid out. Was there a reason why this one was not bid out to anybody else?
I do not know. All I, I talked to Skeev about the Co-Stars. And during the pandemic, as we were just looking to go with the Co-Stars, instead of having all kinds of contractors go through this building at this time.
Yeah, I would, I would just point out that typically speaking, you know, under the, I mean, I think Mr. Madren or Mr. Martin might be, you know, more up on this, but generally under the Co-Stars bidding process, we're deemed to have bid it out already if it, it's a Co-Star contractor. So, you know, they've, they've given us, it's almost like a most favored nation kind of pricing that's acceptable to the state after the state has done bidding. And I guess it, it wouldn't surprise me that we keep ending up using the same Co-, uh, uh, Co-Stars contractor if they're local and do work in this area, just because, you know, why would you pick a Co-Stars contractor from Allegheny County? I mean, you'd pick one that's, that's close. So I, I actually think, given the need to minimize, um, the number of outsiders trucking through and the fact that, uh, we probably wouldn't want them here, it, it makes a lot of sense. And we are, as, as it has been explained to me and with the research I've done, when I get to play solicitor for Rutledge, uh, you know, we're covered because we do have the, you know, we're deemed to have the best pricing.
Well, I, if I could just add on that, though, I mean, I think there's, there's being covered from a legal perspective, and Co-Stars perhaps checks that box in that, you know, it can be deemed to have been bid. But then I think there's also, from a best practices perspective, um, you know, as we saw with the election machines, um, there was a state contract that was in place, but we were able to negotiate a better price. Um, so I, I think, you know, I, I would like to know if there were other vendors, if there are other vendors that we could potentially leverage through Co-Stars or some other, um, state, um, you know, bidding structure that may provide us with a better answer. And I, and I, you know, I, I understand that things are a bit different right now. But if this is a contract that comes up every year and that we know is going to be coming up every year, um, I would like to see that we, you know, do our best to get the best price and the best service for the county. Um, and look, it's not a huge one, but nevertheless, I think we need to be diligent with every, every contract that comes before us.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I think I would, for the, for people watching this, um, government purchasing and contracting is a, is a pretty arcane area, and there's lots of requirements. Um, and what Mr. Madden's talking about makes a lot of sense. I think one of the things that we're trying to get a handle on at the county, and it was certainly at the top of our list when we were campaigning, I, I speak for myself and Ms. Schaefer and Ms. Taylor, and, and certainly at the top of my list coming in and being liaison with the purchasing department, is that, uh, we work hard to really establish a central purchasing apart, department with good procurement practices. And what you're talking about, Mr. Madden, I think is a good procurement practice. I don't know that we right at this point in time, given the staffing shortage and purchasing and stuff, have the ability to do that, but it is something that ought to be on the list. And I see Mr. Madden's gone off mute, so he probably has something to say too.
Yeah, I, um, and Jerry will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we, we've had a couple of things that, uh, you know, Jerry wasn't really expecting to become the department head in January. I, I don't think he realized that Mr. Devaun was, uh, was going to be retiring. And as a result, our transition on some of our contracting has, has been a little bit behind. Um, we saw this with the, with the trash contract being a little bit, uh, delinquent. And this one as well, because we're really just trying to work with Jerry to see what he needs and what's going to happen. But I think, um, on this one, Jerry, we're up against a, uh, an expiration on this contract, right?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we're happy to, uh, spend the day looking and, and seeing who else is on Co-Stars and see if we can get some quick pricing. Um, in fact, I reached out to some of the, uh, folks in the purchasing department on that already. But the clock is ticking on this one. I don't know, you know, the schedule of their inspections, Jerry, maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit. But, um, we are sort of, uh, at the end of a rope here.
Well, I, I appreciate that, Jerry, and I, and I appreciate that you've been sort of, uh, thrust into this role, sort of, uh, uh, and, and appreciate you doing it. So my, my frustration doesn't lie with you, but lies with the fact that I feel like this is the second week in a row I've got to vote on a contract um, that's, um, that is about to expire or has expired. And I have, I'm left with, with, uh, with few choices. Um, is there a process in place, uh, uh, Ms. Grace or Mr. Madden or maybe Ms. Ruth or two figure out what contracts are, are coming up in the next four months? You know, with, with regard to this one, as a May fifth contract, um, while I understand the inspections, we wouldn't want them to go on now. We probably should have been inviting people in, in February and March to come in and look at the, at things before this crisis hit. Um, that the, if we were doing things in, in a, you know, more optimal fashion, we would not be waiting until um, relatively close to the expiration to invite other bidders to come in and see what's going on. So Ms. Grace or Ms. Ruth or Mr. Madden, do we have a list of all, of all contracts that are coming up for expiration for the next six months anywhere in the county?
Well, so historically, we've relied on, um, on the departments to bring them to purchasing. However, um, I would say in the past three weeks, you know, when we're looking at the purchasing department and council's desire to centralize things, this is one of the things that's at the top of our list to, um, get on top of. Do you recall, um, last year when I was, uh, in Mr. Martin's chair? Um, count, uh, you and Mr. Madden requested a list of all the contracts and we, uh, put something together. So we have at least a template to work off of. And, uh, we'll certainly update it and, um, be more efficient with this going forward.
You know, I would, I would just like to say that, uh, I appreciate very much the work that Mr. Madden and, uh, and his staff and purchasing have been doing since we put him in that role. I know he's been working closely with Ms. Grace. And, you know, at the risk of, of sounding, um, like a bit of an apologist, I, I will say baby steps. There's a lot that's been going on and that have limited, you know, limited staffing in the purchasing department, limited staffing countywide, uh, that I think have set back some of the things we all want to be working on. And I have to keep reminding myself when I get frustrated that uh, this majority has been in control of council for literally four months. And, uh, I guess it'll be four months tomorrow. And in that four months, two of those months have been consumed by this public health emergency. So I am a hundred percent on board with getting a real procurement system, and that's something I'd like to talk to Mr. Madden about. Uh, you know, we're going to have to do, I'm, I'm sure, some hiring in the purchasing area. I would encourage people to keep bringing up ideas and sharing them with Mr. Madden, with me, with liaisons for any of our departments. Uh, and also just, as frustrated as I think some of us get, the fact that we are now communicating effectively with people and telling them purchases for things COVID-related and otherwise have to go through central purchasing is a huge step forward. So, uh, we're making progress. It's not like the progress I'd like to see, but it is, uh, it is progress. And, you know, people are getting on board and, and helping, and that is a good thing. And we just have to sit back and remember what we've been through the last couple of months from time to time.
Understood. Any other questions or comments from council?
No, but just, uh, I would like to see, and Mike, just to what you said, if, if it's possible to see in, in short order before tomorrow, uh, what other vendors would have been available under Co-Stars?
Yeah, we're going to make an effort to take a look at that.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Agenda item number sixteen. I believe Mr. Madden is going to present, um, on authorized Provident Energy Consulting uh, to competitively solicit energy request.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Taylor. Good morning, council. Um, with you today regarding the, uh, the energy consortium. This is a consortium of the suburban counties that have historically worked together on their energy purchases. Am I muted? No, I'm not. Um, so, uh, Provident Energy has always worked with the consortium. And, uh, at this point, they've priced nine vendors. And the low vendor is WGL Energy at four point nine two five cents per kilowatt hour. Um, with the option to, uh, go one hundred percent green for another, um, nine, ninety two hundredths of a cent per kilowatt hour. Um, this is the lowest we've been since the early two thousands. First time we've been sub five cents per kilowatt hour since the early two thousands. And this would, uh, accommodate a ninety one thousand dollar reduction, uh, based on budget and energy consumption um, from, uh, twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. Um, and if we go green, we'd still have a sixty six thousand dollar reduction. Uh, Providence is compensated through the energy provider, um, at about a tenth of a cent per hour. Um, so the number you see is the real number for the cost here.
So I had a confusing back and forth with, uh, one of the Provident people, um, about that ninety thousand dollar figure. I, at the end of that exchange, I understood it to be ninety thousand dollars over the three years. Uh, but it would be year one, we would see the ninety thousand, but then flatten from there.
Yeah, I believe it will flatten out after that. Yes.
So it's not, it's third, you know, looking at holistically, it's, it's thirty a year.
It's not two hundred seventy thousand.
Right, exactly. I, I, because that was not that clear in the last email we got.
Right.
So it's ninety in total.
It's ninety almost right away and like you said, flattening out thereafter.
Yeah, I think it's the, the right away because the decrease in the kilowatt hour, you get that savings right away. And then if everything else, everything is equal, you would just maintain that, but it doesn't keep going down.
Right, 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 right.
No, but I, but isn't the, isn't the correct way to think of it, though, if you were paying, let's say you were paying a hundred ninety thousand dollars a year in electricity in the twenty nineteen year, in the twenty twenty year, you'd pay a hundred thousand a year. In the twenty twenty one year, you'd still pay a hundred thousand a year. In the twenty twenty two year, you pay a hundred thousand dollars a year. So relative to our current expenditure, it would be a savings of ninety thousand, but it's not a, it's not compounding. It's not, um, cascading from hundred ninety to a hundred to ten thousand to they pay us eighty thousand.
Right. So I guess each year that, you know, all things being equal, that the expense is ninety one thousand dollars less than it would have been.
Yeah, I, I would just like.
Figure is.
Yeah, and I'd like to share one comment that was in the, uh, the write-up from Provident Energy, which I think is pretty important for all of us to understand, and that is, or for everybody who's watching this, like all five people, uh, to understand is that these types of energy charges for what's called the county, you know, the load, the typical load that a county has when our, when our expense, you know, our usage is high and the timeframe is as low as it's been in twenty years. So that's pretty amazing. And, um, it's an unusual situation where a three-year lock-in is going to get you a lower rate than a two-year lock-in. And in addition to that, there are other charges that are currently under discussion from, um, PJ and Interconnect, which actually handles the, the, the transfer of energy and, uh, some of the providers that would potentially kick in if we were. of the providers that would potentially kick in if we were doing this contract three or four months from now. So it is sort of, it's an opportunity. I think it just happened to fit every, you know, the consortium's schedule. But it almost matter how you look at it, we are unlikely to see these rates for long. And to be able to lock them in for three years is is very advantageous.
I'd say my only apprehension here, you know, and I've done a lot of talking about this and thinking about this, is, you know, we do plan on doing a comprehensive ESCO initiative. And this does really tie the hands in that sector for whatever we do moving forward for three years, which is a long time. But, you know, weighing the pros and cons, the pros being that we would be able to lock in this rate in an energy industry that is surely to go up after this crisis. I've come down on the side that I, you know, I've gotten there to get comfortable with a three-year lock-in. And we will save money. I'm wholly behind the green energy credits. I've been told that they probably will not be for local companies. You know, they probably will go elsewhere to get them. But that's okay with me, you know, supporting green energy anywhere is I'd rather have them be in a Delaware County company, but we'll have to work on that.
Just to be clear, so I'm understanding of the the implications with regard to the ESCO. We're locking in a price. We're not not locking in a total volume of consumption, are we?
That's correct. So you know, your ESCOs would typically save you on usage. So you could still see savings from an ESCO on top of what you're looking at here.
Yeah, we're just locking in a price that's at a very good rate right now. If we're able to, you know, swap out machinery that, you know, HVAC units that are less consuming, we're still going to save from an energy perspective.
Right. But they may, if they look in in two years, found a situation where some alternate source, energy source would be more compatible with whatever changes we're making, we wouldn't be able to do them that year.
Well, yeah, if energy prices go down further, then, you know, we're stuck at this really, really historically low rate.
With this provider.
Yes, I think so, Mike.
Yes, yeah, right.
Okay. I guess I would I would add my own support for this and note my own support for the for the promotion of the green add-on to it. I recognize that will cost us more money. But I think one of the roles of government, the government has is to use its position both to demonstrate behavior that we'd like others to emulate and to foster industries that we think are in the common good. And I think renewable energy fits into both of those categories. So I don't I don't really like to spend money. But but I think this is a good expenditure of money. So for my part, I am in favor of that as well.
And Mike, just so I'm clear on that, it'd be $30,000 difference for per year?
Twenty-five thousand dollars per year. So as we talked about, your savings in the first year would be 66,000 rather than 91,000 based on our budget consumption.
Yeah, Brian, I think you said it very well. And if if we can be leaders and show, you know, what other organizations across the county should be doing, and the fact that it really doesn't cost you a whole lot much more to be doing our part to combat climate change, I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, $25,000 divided by 550,000 people across the county means that each of us, you know, it costs us, what, 4 cents or 5 cents or something for a year for our county to be doing the right thing? I think that's I think that's the right move.
I think it really gives you, I think the it really provides a great opportunity in that when you're looking at the savings that you're going to be able to have, and you know, that you haven't seen the utility price this low since early 2000, and really puts you in a great position to be able to pursue that that goal and your policy and supporting green. So I just think it's, you know, a great opportunity.
And I'll note that all of the other counties in the consortium, as I understand it, are opting for the green energy credits. So, you know, that speaks pretty highly for our region and us all working together to do our part and make some progress on this front.
Yeah, don't hold me, Koo, but I don't remember that I've seen that in the past. So, you know, it might be standing out with that out in front, wanting to have that that really brought it to everybody's mind. And everybody saw it's a great time, you know, and it's a good time to be able to do it. So.
Well, and I think if people take this as an opportunity to look at their own personal option, I think they're going to see something very similar. I mean, when I looked at our own energy options, I also saw that going green was was really pretty cheap. So hopefully this is something to remind others to take a look at their own personal decisions.
Mr. Chairman, I have an obligation tomorrow evening in Chad's Ford. Their executive session starts at 6:00. Their meeting starts at 7:00. If you want me to participate, if you could move me up to the top of the agenda, I might be able to duck out of the executive session. I don't think there's anyone who knows this better than me, other than the members of council themselves and Ms. Grace.
Well, that's fine by me, as long as the rest of council doesn't object to moving. Ms. Coogan, if you could move Mr. Madren to the top of the the agenda tomorrow, we can we can have you go first. And that way you can hopefully kill two birds with one stone.
Could we also, just the Kinetex, could we do that as well?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll move the two of them to the top.
Okay, yeah, we might need your help on that one, too, Mr. Madren.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I was I was Googling electric suppliers for my house. I should I should I should get on that. So I will I'll wait till after the meeting, then I'll do that. Appreciate the the recommendation, Mr. Madren, Mr. Madden. I think it's a good one. Anything else for agenda item number 16? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Madren. Oh, you're already gone. You're a step ahead of me. All right, Dr. Taylor, moving swiftly along.
Yes. Agenda item number 17. I believe Mr. Martin's going to talk about the acceptance of $329,616.60 from the Election Security Grant.
Number 17 to 18, I'll address essentially together for purposes of this meeting. The county received a letter addressed to the chairman last week from the Pennsylvania Department of State, indicating that it was the intended recipient of two pots of money. The first in the amount of $329,000 and change associated with a grant from Congress under its Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2020 to provide elections security grants. So the election security grant, again, of just short of $330,000, is to be spent between December 21, 2019, and December 31, 2022. So a bit over three years, but preferably for expenditures related to the 2020 election. It can include personnel, equipment, cybersecurity measures, increased security of voting systems and ballots, expenditures to expand and support voting by mail and other voter services. So that that is the first pot of money. The second, again, in the field of elections, is the amount of $282,451, which is associated with the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act passed by council about a month or so ago. And this amount, as distinct from the first, is to be spent in 2020 during the window, January 20, January 20 through the end of the year. And these are for increased expenses arising in the administration of the election due to COVID-19. And that can include voter notification, education, mail cost, absentee ballots, mitigation cost, equipment, staffing, et cetera. And they have asked for an affirmation and agreement by the county to be signed by the chairman and returned no later than Monday, May 11. So it's on your agenda for tomorrow to approve the chairman's act and accepting the money.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So I've gotten a little bit, I've got a little bit confused of different pots of money that are coming from different sources. The the first amount, the $329,000, is this separate and distinct from other monies that we had previously gotten to to help us to pay for the the new voting machines?
This is this is actually separated distinct from that. We've already received our federal check for the new voting machines.
How much was that?
It was 600 and some thousand. It was received, like 660,000. It was received in one of our earlier meetings. Ms. Hagan let us know that.
But there are two checks, right? There was there was the state check and there was the federal check.
Well, that was the federal check. I don't know that we've received the state check yet. The state check is actually, and there will likely be more than one state check, because the state check goes to, you know, the federal money was the federal money. That was the amount that we get, period. The state money is refunding us 60% of our equipment costs that are purchased, you know, this year to meet the governor's mandate. That number is going up because we did things like buying envelope opening machines and we're, you know, we bought a third high-speed scanner, you know, and that is under the state's bond issue to fund machine purchases. I do not know, we have our first request to the state for the 60% reimbursement was approved. I don't know if that check has come in yet or not. You know, we'd have to have to check on that. But the but the we did get word that the first submission that Ms. Hagan made was received and approved. There will be additional submissions. You know, I was told and shared with Ms. Hagan, I was told by the Secretary of State's office to get them in as early as possible. I think clearly the increase in mail-in ballots dictated certain purchases that we hadn't anticipated to add to that. So we will be submitting an additional, sorry about that, we'll be submitting an additional request for reimbursement. But things like that high-speed scanner that was really purchased because the COVID emergency has driven up the number of mail-in ballots and, you know, some of the other equipment that we've acquired, extra printers that can print the ballots, things like that, are also eligible for the funding under the grant under number 18. The funding under the grant under number 17 is really, that I think had been out there and was going, you know, was part of the Consolidated Appropriations Act that was in the works prior to the COVID emergency, and is there to address congressional concerns regarding the security of US elections. So dealing with our systems integrity and, you know, how we're processing data and the security space needs perhaps to keep things secure, things like that. So we will need to have continuing discussions with the election departments about how these monies are being spent and which belong in which pots. It's not a small undertaking.
It strikes me that the the entire, one of the one of the base premises behind the purchase of the new voting machines was to increase security. I know that it was also to make sure that recounts could be done. But there was concern about the security of our systems. And when we were deciding on what systems to buy and what were what what one what those that we should buy and those that we shouldn't, I know Mr. Madden in particular, was very focused on the security of the machines that we would purchase. So I would think that we would be able to allocate that these monies should be able to be allocated towards the purchase of those machines. One other item, Ms. Ruth, or to the extent that we are currently getting reimbursed 60% for any election equipment, and presuming that we won't get reimbursed 60% for election equipment in future years, might it not behoove us to purchase more election equipment this year than we otherwise wouldn't? And I'm particularly thinking of every day that goes by, it seems to be the notion for mail-in ballots seems to become more and more relevant as this crisis drags on and more and more people sign up for this. Is there a need for additional equipment that we could purchase? And if so, it seems to me that there might be a suggestion to the election board that we purchase more rather than less, given the fact that we will get reimbursed 60% now and won't next year.
My sense is that the single biggest need is scanning capacity, especially high-speed scanning capacity and potentially envelope opening, you know, equipment and the various peripheral IT equipment that goes along with the high-speed scanners. I do not know that Delaware County legitimately needs a fourth high-speed scanner. I do know Montgomery County made the decision this year, they had two, they had acquired two, and they decided they probably needed a third. They're obviously a lot bigger than we are, very high turnout, generally speaking. But it is it is under constant review as to what we need. And I do think that there will be a hard look at that, especially as we get a little bit further into this. Like I said, almost immediately, as the numbers started to go up, Ms. Hagan and Mr. Savage recommended a third high-speed scanner. So that the other piece of this, too, is there will be, I'm sure, additional IT needs moving forward, because the state's going to be making some substantial changes to its its secure voter registration system. So there'll be a lot of things coming down the pike, and we will certainly look to maximize the use of these dollars. I would also say that when it comes to facilities, especially now that we are going to have more mail-ins, voter registration is a play, you know, voter registration, voter, the election bureau, and even the election warehouse are places where we need to seriously consider whether the space that they currently occupy, forgetting social distancing, but just above the space they occupy is going to be sufficient, because a function that was normally done largely in the precincts, which is counting absentees, you know, you've just hugely inflated that number. And now you're bringing it, not just the counting, but all the storage that goes along with all of these paper ballots. I mean, the storage issue has been an enormous one that was never there before. And it wasn't there until we went to paper ballots, because we never had them. The envelopes that have to be acquired and printed, I mean, these things, these are boxes that take up huge numbers of square feet. And so there will be facility needs that have to be evaluated there. And I imagine, to the extent they relate to mail-in and the increased mail-in and the likelihood that we're going to have increased mail-in in November, there may be some things that would be appropriately charged to the to the COVID budget, because we have been told that if they are related to increased mail-in costs, and even if they're capital, they could appropriately be charged to those funds.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council with regard to agenda items number 17 and 18? All right. Thank you, Bill. Dr. Taylor?
I believe Mr. Martin is also going to talk about agenda item number 19, looking at grant acknowledgement and agreement with the Delaware Valley Regional Economic Development Fund.
You're all very well familiar with the Small Business Grant Program that you established. The corpus of money was $1.75 million. One and a half million dollars of that was county money that had previously rested in the Redevelopment Authority, which came back for this use. This relates to the other $250,000, which is a grant from a nonprofit entity, the Delaware Valley Regional Economic Development Fund, which was established out of the early 21st century deregulation of PICO and controls money, which is to be used within the PICO service area, including Delaware County. So they are making this grant of $250,000, which you've already determined will go out to small businesses per the grant program. They have a relatively simple grant acknowledgement and agreement, which they've tendered and we've worked out. And this will be for the authority to approve and execute that agreement.
I was muted there. Sorry. Ms. Shae, anything you'd like to add to this? I know you were, you've been knee deep in this.
No, we can, we don't need to talk about it twice. We can talk about it.
All right, great. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 20, this is to approve the hiring of the Archer Law Firm to serve as solicitor to the County Jail Oversight Board. Mr. Madden, do you want to chat about this quickly? the hiring of the Archer Law Firm to serve as solicitor to the County Jail Oversight Board. Mr. Madden, do you want to chat about this quickly?
I'm off. I'll let Mr. Martin talk about the process that we got to get to Archer. But I'll only say that, you know, in the, in the limited time we've had with them, so far, they, they clearly, you know, they are as advertised. They have very relevant experience and they've been a tremendous benefit to the jail oversight board in the, like I said, the limited timeframe we've had so far with them.
Yeah, I would just second that. I'm really impressed with the, the background that they bring and the, even though it was just a, you know, virtual meetings with them, I felt, you know, very personally connected to them. I feel that they have a, they bring their personalities, their sense, their humanness to, to the role and the kinds of things that they've done and the kinds of things that they have talked about that they would be able to do for us, I think are really going to be able to enhance the, the work that the jail oversight board is tasked to do. And, you know, so I think I, I'm very happy with them.
The, this item and the next several items are approvals of engagement of law firms. I think there's been some ambiguity previously in the life of the council, whether it's approved law firm engagements. The Controller's Office had expressed a pretty strong opinion that engagements of firms where it's anticipated the total fees over a reasonable period would exceed $25,000 should be approved by council. I think that the the case can be argued either way under the charter, but I think that consistent with council's desire for transparency, it makes more sense to bring them up. So the first one is Archer and Greiner. They're on a $2,000 retainer for their standard monthly work for the oversight board. But there are certain items from time to time that were asked of them that are over and above the retainer. So it will be somewhat over 25,000 and the individuals have a lot of prior experience dealing with this subject matter. And they are individuals that I've also have worked with in a prior life and think highly of them.
I'll also add that that price for the retainer would equate to roughly a third of what we were paying the prior solicitor to the jail oversight board or to the prison board. So we're saving some money here as well, in addition to what I think is a very top-notch representation we're getting.
Well, good job. Thanks, guys.
All right. Proceeding, proceeding to the next item, if it's okay with you, is again a law firm, in this case Campbell Durant, which is a firm that we have been utilizing in connection with labor law matters. And I think it's probably worth noting on this one in particular, that essentially all of the work up to this point has been driven by COVID-related circumstances where we, where we required specific advice from the firm to make sure that our dealings with employees and the respective unions are both consistent with the quickly evolving law and the and the union contracts. We're paying for this service on a reduced hourly rate, but it's anticipated that it will exceed $25,000 in the course of this calendar year.
All right. Thank you. I think we have one more after that, actually. Number 22 might be another law firm.
There are two more.
Two more, sorry. Any other questions with regard to to agenda item number 21 before we move on? All right. We'll move on to 22 then, if you will, Mr. Martin.
22, 22, and I'm having a little trouble identifying the paperwork here, is the Dwayne Morris Law Firm, which has been selected as solicitor to the Board of Elections. And while the Dwayne Morris firm is probably a firm of close to 1,000 attorneys, the work in this case is specifically done by one attorney, Mr. Parks, who has a subspecialty in election law and he's providing his expertise as a retainer, monthly retainer of $3,000 per month. And as we get beyond November, the number of months will cause that to exceed by a bit $25,000. Mr. Parks is very conversant in this area of law and the rate he is charging us as a retainer is extraordinarily reduced from what he charges his private part, his private compliance at Dwayne Morris.
Mr. Martin, in another lifetime, 22 years ago, I, I worked at Dwayne Morris. I left there 22 years ago. I presume that that would not serve as an impermissible conflict since I haven't worked there for decades.
Unless you had a very unusual exit arrangement where they're still paying you.
No, they, they are not. They, yeah. I'll leave it at that, but they're not paying me. No.
No, there's no conflict there.
Okay.
Any other questions on Dwayne Morris?
I do. Mr. Manley happens to be the president of the Board of Directors of the nonprofit for which I'm the executive director.
And in that case, I think it probably would be better if you recuse when this matter comes up tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Bill, do you have a point of reference on what was previously being paid?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Do we try to get that for tomorrow? I think that's useful. That's useful to understand.
I might be able to help there. Francis Catania was the solicitor for the election board and he provided services for quite a while while a, you know, one of the many part-time solicitors getting paid by the county as an employee. And therefore it was part of his employment arrangement. And I don't know what his salary was. We can go back and look at it, but he was one of our longer-lived solicitors, so I imagine it was not inconsiderable. He did for some short period of time, I believe, provide services to the Board of Elections since he retired in November as a, as a retained attorney because he was no longer an employee, but it was literally a matter of a month or two.
Was that on an hourly basis for that month or two?
I believe so, and I don't believe there was any discounted rate, but we'd have to go check and see what the fees were.
Okay. Well, if we could, if we could find out what that hourly rate is, just give people again a point of context.
Yeah, but I think, just, just to be clear, at $3,000 a month, that would be an annualized rate without benefits of $36,000 a year. And, you know, in my discussions with Mr. Parks about this, and, you know, he was originally retained by, by Bob Scott, I think Manley's understanding was that he would do this sort of be the primary person for the first year or so with the idea that particularly if as the legal department for the county moved towards more of a full-time model where we're trying to bring work in-house, that if there was somebody, a younger lawyer or litigator who was identified, who wanted to start picking up the election work, that Manley would basically train that person and, you know, be, be stepping back and presumably either reducing his, his retainer or, you know, and be available on some other reduced rate arrangements as needed. So he is entering into this, he entered into this with the idea of it not being a long-term, permanent relationship. So.
I just wanted to mention, Ms. Schaefer, I think it appears that your board would be in good hands.
I'm no dummy and I recruited him.
And, and the, the final one in terms of law, law firms is Eastburn and Gray. Eastburn and Gray, through their partner, Joan Price, has been retained to provide outside counsel assistance on matters relating to the countywide real estate reassessment. That is also being done at an hourly rate. It's been done at a discount. And I've spoken to Ms. Price specifically about bifurcating elements of her representation which are associated with it with COVID-related issues so that some portion of the fees will be able to be identified as a public health emergency cost. But that being said, the total of costs over the calendar year would be anticipated to exceed $25,000.
I would just like to give you just a quick background and tell you that this relationship, I, I hope, will change. The thought, again, that Mr. Scott and I had when Ms. Price was retained was that our assessor's office is substantially understaffed. We literally have two assessors and Ms. Grace has a, I guess George is on your staff. George Cordis is a, is a part-time retired attorney who's on Ms. Grace's staff who's been helping with this project, but it was really pretty substantially under-resourced. And then, of course, COVID hit and it, there was a need to be looking at a lot of different things. She is a state, she's an expert in the Pennsylvania assessment law. She actually chaired the committee that wrote the consolidated assessment law for Pennsylvania. So that's a big help. She's known to our assessors because she is the solicitor to the State Association of Real Estate Assessors. And she is charging less at an hourly rate than McNichol Byrne, who's our current Board of Assessment, you know, attorney, and they charge an hourly rate. I think the understanding with Ms. Price was that we would use her probably through June while the reassessment process was continuing in Tyler's hands and, you know, we had to manage that process and that we were going to simultaneously be working on redoing the Board of Assessment, which is also on the agenda for today. I would recommend to that Board of Assessment, and I, you know, certainly defer to Mr. Martin to give his own opinion that, you know, her, her job would be done working on the reassessment when roles are submitted. And I would strongly recommend to our Board of Assessment that they consider engaging her as their solicitor. And, you know, that's a conversation we can have at the time, but that would be my recommendation.
Well, I've had experience with her as well in my involvement with the reassessment and, you know, I would just say, you know, I'm really impressed with the work that she's done. She's been able, of course, to just jump right in. She has such a, you know, a hands-on, granular understanding of what we're doing. And as we've gotten to this phase in the project, this is where the tougher questions, the bigger issues are coming up, and I'm finding that her expertise and, and her leadership in this really has been invaluable. So I'd be very supportive of, of seeing her in that role. And, and I just wanted to mention, Bill, you had mentioned with with Dwayne Morris, the possibility of some of this, you know, being COVID-related, you know, much of this work, the work that they're doing really is in response to our responding to the, to the pandemic. And so, you know, I appreciate that, you know, you're thinking about that. It might be something that we could think about with the other attorneys that, you know, even in a portion of that might be able to be covered by some of the funding that we've received for it.
And the only, the only point I'll reference, just so we, it is, it is not clear to me as a matter of the charter that is the role of the Board of, while the Board of Assessment in the past may have selected its own solicitor, I believe a better reading of the charter is that the solicitor, that the county solicitor appoints the board's solicitor, which then serves as independent counsel to the board. If I'm right in that interpretation, I'm sure the solicitor would look kindly upon the recommendation shared by Ms. Ruther regarding Ms. Price, but I, I'm not sure that it's their, their role to pick their solicitor. It may be the county's role to designate their solicitor.
Yeah, you know, I think it's, we can, we can debate this because the, under the state consolidated assessment law, you know, it's, it's not, it, it's one of those places where the charter, which was written a long time before the consolidated assessment law was done, it, it's not clear they align. And I'm not sure the state law would normally prevail. But either way, I will just tell you, she, by the way, she was for 20 years the full-time in-house solicitor for the Board of Assessment in Montgomery County, and she retired from that position. But she really likes doing the county work and was willing to come back and do this at a, at a pretty steep discount. So I think we're very fortunate to have.
I don't think there's any debate about the individual. It's just a question of where that sits me. We can talk about it as we need to.
Yeah. And right now, the other part of this, I mean, certainly some of her funds can be covered with COVID because she is, has, to date, has been engaged to work on the reassessment. We have had the conversation with our financial advisor, and that is considered a capital expense, you know, her, her fees to date that aren't otherwise covered by the COVID money to deal with the COVID crisis. Her regular input on the reassessment process is, is inappropriate capital expenditure.
That's all I had in this stream of items. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I believe the next agenda item is agenda item number 24, looking at the consultant agreement with Gornfellow, Gornfloh Consulting Incorporated for assistance preparing the strategic plan for a proposed county health department. And so I will talk about that one. We started this process, we were hoping to get this done a month ago, but we kind of got sidetracked with the pandemic. So we actually started this process. Our working group for our public health, our small breakout group out of that, started this process in February. So we actually started interviewing candidates and looking at proposals at the end of February, and then we kind of picked it back up in April. And this was the best candidate. This is somebody who actually specializes in developing health departments in our region, in our area, and developing strategic plans. The only thing I would have to say is that the amount is actually a little bit different because after we discussed and decided upon this candidate, we, as a group, decided that one of the things that was not in the proposal was she was hoping for some sort of a little bit of administrative support from the county to kind of work on this and go through this. And I just thought that in the times we're in and how we're so short-staffed that we wouldn't really have the capabilities to be able to provide that extra support from the county side. So I had, we requested as a group that she come back with a proposal that included some sort of administrative assistance. And so she sent that yesterday, and I believe Ann sent it out. And so the difference is, I think it bumps up to 44,000 for the total cost. And that's what, just adding in the administrative cost or administrative support help.
So we'll just amend the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay. Positive, I have that.
Monica, not necessarily today, but maybe tomorrow. Can you just go through the process of like how many people viewed and how you came to find this particular person? And honestly, we can do it tomorrow, so you don't have to do it twice, but I think people would be interested in hearing that.
Okay. Yeah. And then also tomorrow, I was going to do in my public comments portion, I was just going to give an update of kind of the process so far and how we got to this point in the process and then kind of looking at a little bit projection ahead, what we're looking at.
That's a great idea.
Yes, please. Thanks for doing this, Monica, and for everybody else who worked on it.
Thanks.
I, I think what's been presented here really is comprehensive. And, you know, so I think that people will be pleased to hear that, that there's really a, you know, a significant endpoint with the the documentation that she's going to be able to put together that really is going to give the county the, you know, the layout, the map of what they need in order to be able to implement a health department. So this is a document that I, that I see is really going to be really a working document that people are really going to be able to work from and achieve some specific results based on it. And her name's Grace. Last name's hard to say, but we can call her Grace.
Okay, good.
All right. So if there are any more questions, I guess we'll move on to agenda item number 25, looking to advertise for an RFP for insurance brokerage services related to the county's health benefits.
And before we get into this, Mr. Martin, our current benefits broker is Gallagher Insurance Benefits. I do business with Gallagher, not with the local office, but I do a fair bit of business with them in other offices, primarily in Louisiana. Is that such that I should recuse myself from participation in any discussions with regard to this?
To the extent that the question here is whether to proceed with an To the extent that the question here is whether to proceed with an RFP for these services. So I would not think that that issue triggers any conflict based on what you suggested because whether to RFP or not is a determination, I think, independent of your assessment of the group.
Okay.
And just as a point of fact, I think it's been a very long time since this service has been RFPed. We raised this a few years ago and got significant pushback from the prior council about RFPing this insurance brokerage services. So I just want to kind of put that on the record there. I certainly say it as an argument for why we should most definitely RFP it, but I just want that to be known. I think the incumbent's been the incumbent for a long time because there hasn't been an RFP.
And Brian, I think that your input, and I'm glad to hear, you know, Bill's response, because I think your input will be invaluable with this, and so I'm glad that we would be able to have that.
Well, I appreciate that, though I do question how much input I can have when it comes to actually selecting the broker, whether it's our current one or others. But I'm certainly happy to offer the following broad comments, and that is that I think it's, and I said this, I'm not saying anything new, as Mr. Madden suggests, I said this in years past, that I think it behooves us to put this out to bid periodically, which is separate and distinct from commenting on the wisdom or foolishness of continuing to retain our current broker. That issue is not before us. All I have been concerned about here to fore has been with wanting to get quotes in. And, you know, that's true with insurance brokers, it's true with somebody checking our sprinkler system in the garage, and it's true with a lot of other, with a lot of other things. So, you know, for my part, I think it does make sense to put this out to bid. It's a little, the other thing I'll add is that we, I've been working with our current broker, along with Ms. Grace and others in the county government, to look at our current plan of benefits, to look at potentially RFPing out the other vendors that we use sort of further down the food chain, the pharmacy benefit manager, the administrative services provider, the network that we use for our health, for our health plan. So it's, I'm not sure the sequencing of events, whether we should put a hold on that RFPing until such time as we figure out whether or not we want to have a new broker or not. But perhaps let's not put the cart before the horse. There may not be, others may not want to put this out to bid.
Yes, I guess there's tomorrow. I just think that in terms of not even the selection, I mean, that's a whole nother piece, but in what the element should be, is, you know, you do have such a good understanding of what those elements should be that we're really looking for. So, you know, I really appreciate that. And I think that's how we're going to, you know, you get a good product when you, when the request that you put out is good. The more detail you have there, the more we can expect to get back and get a better product to be able to administer this for the county. So I know you bring that to the table, and I'm glad you'll be able to.
And I'd only add, I think it's not just about getting quotes, right? This is about getting, this is a professional service, and it's getting the best capable professional to, you know, provide these services to us. And I think just in my, you know, professional experience, just going through the RFP process, you're getting a lot of free intel. You're getting people who come and bid. They're giving you, you know, a free read on where you stand versus what you're doing. So just the RFP process is beneficial, and obviously it's not something you do every year, but it is something you do periodically, you know, at the right amount of time to, you know, see where you stand.
And I would point out, and it's maybe just one of those things that sort of serendipitously came up, but I don't know if other council members received. One of our communications from CCAP pointed out that there is a vendor, you know, or not a vendor, there's a, basically a municipally-owned, cooperatively-owned insurance provider who provides these kinds of services too through CCAP. So I think there's a lot of things we would want to look at in this process. But at the end of the day, it's about where are we going to get the best service, the right service tailored for our employee population? And, you know, asking Gallagher to show us what they've got relative to everybody else as opposed to just handing us an invoice.
What is the total buy that this represents for the county?
I don't know.
I think it depends on your perspective of what the buy is. So the, we are, we have a self-funded health plan. This is regarding the insurance brokerage for our health benefits. Our self-insured health plan spends, you know, something on the order of $45 to $50 million a year. And Gallagher is advising us on how that plan operates. So if you're looking, so from one perspective, it could be $40 to $50 million. But it's, by no means are we sending $40 to $50 million to Gallagher. So if the question is how much do we send to Gallagher, I do not know how much money they make either directly from the county or indirectly. You know, in some instances, brokers make money by, they get a fee that downstream vendors might pay to them. So for instance, an administrator of a health plan might charge $30 per employee per month to pay claims, and they may, they may give $3 of that $30 to the broker. And others do it as, sometimes brokers get paid a percentage of stop-loss premiums. So we, I guess, I don't know how much Gallagher makes or has made by virtue of their, the remuneration for the services they provide with regard to the health plan, if that was the question.
Well, it was intentionally vague because I, you know, I think it's important on two levels. One is it's a huge amount of the county's spending, whether it's going directly to Gallagher or not. The decisions we make around how we, you know, how we administer our healthcare benefits is a significant impact on our budget. And then secondly, you know, the fact that we don't know how much goes to the vendor is in and of itself an important thing that we need to flesh out. So on both fronts, it amplifies the importance of it.
It's super important in terms of, we need to understand the way our broker is getting paid because it could have a direct effect on who is, who we are using, who we are covering, and who the administrators are, and could affect the quality of healthcare that our employees are getting. It could have a great effect on it. So I think it's something we, in our RFP, should make sure we are very clear on each company, how they are getting paid.
Yes, I agree. It should be really clear.
Who is presenting this agenda item tomorrow night?
I can, if you'd like me to.
I just want clarity. I don't have a strong opinion. It sort of bubbled up organically out of council, so I needed to...
Well, who would, who would drive the process forward? I guess that's one way of answering it.
Well, the, I mean, historically, I think that, Marianne...
Well, historically, it has come from our personnel department, from HR. Medical benefits are covered under HR, and that's historically where this would be. So we can do that. We can ask Barb Hatton to do it if you'd like. I can introduce it if you'd like, whatever your pleasure is.
I'll suggest that for the chair.
Well, I appreciate, appreciate the question. So I'll speak with Ms. Grace after this, and perhaps with Ms. Hatton, and we will figure out, designate a person to present this tomorrow night, just to kick off the conversation. If that's okay with the rest of council. I'm seeing nods. Okay. All right. So we'll do that. Anything else with regard to agenda item number 25? All right. Is everybody doing, this may be the longest agenda meeting in the history of Delaware County. Or is, I know we have just a few items left, a couple of them, the tax assessment boards might take a little while. Does anybody need a break for a couple of minutes? Or do you want to keep going through?
Let's just keep going.
Yeah, I'd rather keep rolling.
Okay. All right then. All right. So agenda item number 26, there's notes in summary of purchases pursuant to the emergency declaration as per the attached list. So I think we all remember that we decided that there might be instances where things had to be purchased out of the ordinary course because of the emergency declaration, and we wanted to make sure that they would come back to us later for our ratification. So I assume that's what this is. Mr. Martin is nodding his head relatively vigorously. So there are two items, one for the purchase of the surgical masks for $31,350, three orders of masks, two surgical and one of N95. And then there's a pending one for Goldhorn Electrical Construction with regard to labor materials to power the temporary morgue, or perhaps the pending one is the surgical masks, I'm not sure. Does anybody have any more information about which one of those is pending?
Goldhorn Electric.
Goldhorn Electric, okay. My recollection was that Goldhorn was, we were thinking of using them to do two, two things out at the, at our testing site. The first was the temporary morgue, making sure the electricity was hooked up for that. And the second was to establish electricity out at another building where we were going to store some community service vehicles or other equipment. Maybe it wasn't community service, but it was other equipment that the county had out at Building 13. This is with regard to the morgue, though, that's as far as you know, Ms. Kugan?
There was, I will send to council today, there was a bunch of bills attached, and it was totaled to that. To be honest, I didn't look at each individual bill. I think it had to do more than just the morgue.
Okay. All right. We'll take a look at that before tomorrow. But I am aware of some of an item that was about $50,000 to make sure that we had the electricity to build up this morgue site that we were, that we created out at the emergency testing site in Fullcroft. And as I think has been covered by the newspapers, but I'll just say for the, for purposes of this discussion, this was necessary to make sure that we could handle both the volume of cases that are coming in due to COVID-19 and to move the morgue away from the Fair Acres facility, considering the fact that it might not be best practices to bring potential COVID-19 patients in close proximity to our nursing home. So that was the original thinking behind it. But most of it was, as I understood it, the just, the size constraints, the couldn't, our current, our existing facility couldn't stand the, couldn't withstand the capacity necessities that this crisis was creating.
You know, I would like to, I think there was one other request for electrical work to be done out at that site. And the request, you know, I know I've had a conversation with Mr. Martin that my concern is, we did have an understanding, as I gather, with the nonprofit corporation that the county created, but no longer has a right to appoint any board members to its board, that, you know, notwithstanding a lease that was rammed through at the end of last year, we did have an understanding to be able to use the structures, you know, the part of the property that's being used for the morgue, that we could use the, that we could do that, and that the electric and everything would be set up for that. Because it's not clear that we have an understanding to do any more than that, I had asked that we not proceed with the electrical work at the other part of the building, certainly not proceed with it without further vetting. So I just want to make sure if we can before tomorrow that this is limited to the work on the morgue.
I would also add that the, when the pricing and the expediency of the morgue work falls under this, this structure that we have now, and I think looking at the pricing reflects the emergency basis and that the subsequent work that you're talking about, Christine, does not have that type of urgency, should not, we should not be paying emergency situation prices, and we should not include that in this spending. But while we are talking about spending more for emergency situations, I wanted to just explore why or if the extra expenditure for our trash service through Gold Medal should be coming through this, is coming through this, and where we are with that. So just as a little background, our trash provider came to us this month and significantly jacked up our price due to the COVID situation ostensibly. And we, A, would like to go ahead and bid out the service since the price was so significantly increased that it's not tenable long-term. And I would like to think that that huge jack-in price because of this COVID situation would come through this emergency funding and would be covered by COVID recovery money.
You know, I just, as I recall from that conversation, the other reason it was jacked up is because we did not, our contract with, and this is, goes back to our earlier discussion about purchasing and getting a handle on the contracts that are out there. That contract had actually expired. And therefore, you know, if we were going to have a, they were coming in and saying, we'll keep doing it, we'll keep doing it at this exorbitant rate, we're not, otherwise we won't do it anymore. And we did not have another vendor. I believe purchasing did make an attempt to get other vendors in, but because of the COVID emergency, nobody was bidding it. So it is, you know, we really were in a situation where there wasn't a lot of choice with that, you know, partly due to the fact that it had gotten to the situation where it had expired, and partly due to the fact that we weren't getting bids. Lots of reasons why, and this was intended as a very, Ms. Grace, I believe this was intended as a very short-term stopgap while we're bidding it again, isn't that right?
Yes, although I have to, I'm sorry, I need to follow up with Mike again and ask what the status of that is, but yes.
I do think they've already scheduled the bid opening for later this month.
Okay.
In response, you know, the long-term contract to replace the short-term exorbitant monthly rate.
But my point is that short-term stopgap that we are paying right now, which is significant, should, in my opinion, be a COVID expense.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we could document that, I mean, I believe you're right. I guess one of the things that I would ask Mr. Martin and our COVID monies are, Mr. Lichtenstein, to do is to go back and make sure that that expense is appropriately documented as to why we were not able to get other vendors in, you know, in the timeframe.
And can I just go back on this Goldhorn, it's my understanding, and Ann, if you do have those invoices, it is my understanding that this is for the work at the temporary medical examiner site, that the proposals that had come through that was for the storage facility, the last thing I did was going back to Tim and said that this needed to be bid, and the full bid process, and that the, you know, the other questions about whether or not it's something that can be there, should be there, I mean, there are even other questions, but that this is something. So my belief is that this is for the morgues. But if you can just take a look at them, Ann, since you have the bills, and confirm that.
I will.
We have moved forward on the other work.
All right. We're moving swiftly along then. If there's nothing else with regard to this agenda item, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which I think has to do with the Tax Assessment Appeals Auxiliary Board members. Ms. Ruth R., do you want to speak on this item? Oh, you're on mute there, Christine.
Sorry about that. People probably don't remember, but back in the distant sands of time in January, we had addressed the fact that we were going to, you know, under this court order, the county is still, you know, it's got this reassessment out there, and we're expecting that if it proceeds along the timeline the court laid out, that we will be having a substantial number of formal assessment appeals. And the consolidated county assessment law allows for the appointment of a pool of up to 18 people to help with the assessment appeals. They can only hear residential appeals. And we posted a request for applications. We received 45 or 46 of them. Our assessor and Mr. Cordis, who works for Ms. Grace and has been working on the reassessment project, reviewed all of the, so this was posted, I believe, in January, Ms. Kugan, it was posted in January. And, you know, it was up for a couple of months, and we have received, in fact, just even recently received, an application. And, and, you know, it was up for a couple of months and we have received, in fact, just even recently received an application. We pushed it out as best we could and had over forty-five applicants. They were reviewed by our chief assessor, Mr. Ben Zalston, by Mr. Cordis, who they ranked them. A questionnaire went out asking them about time constraints and when they'd be available to meet. I spent a considerable amount of time going through them, looking, and you know, my, my look-through was really to primarily identify where people were from. And because these auxiliary board members will be sitting in different hearing sites around the county and the goal is to send the same people to the same sites so that they're hearing the same, you know, appeals about the same kinds of properties. And I went through them and I actually am going to slightly amend the motion. We, we have authority to appoint up to eighteen. I am going to suggest that there's a couple of people here who I, I did some due diligence to and called around. There's a couple of people who've been ill or would be very limited if, you know, I, I just want to make sure that they're still available to serve. So my request is that we approve the first sixteen on the list. I can happily go through the names, but you'll see as you go through them. I color-coded it, like, you know, it was kind of anal for me. I'm not usually this organized. But I color-coded it to try to give you a sense of where people were from so that you could see that there was a geographic representation. I think what I've called South Central may be bigger than it ought to be. Some of those towns maybe should be moved around, but it is a group of people with a lot of real estate or legal experience or a lot of experience in, you know, their communities and would have reason to know home and property values. They do have to go through six hours of training. They do represent the county. I can list the names if you'd like me to, or we could just provide them to the top sixteen on the list I circulated that stated five. Four, I think. It includes some retired assessors who've worked for the county. It includes one member is a current member of the Board of Assessment, which we'll get to in a second. He's been, you know, those terms ended, but he has been continuing to serve in that capacity until his successor is appointed, which hopefully will happen today or tomorrow. But I'm happy to take you through the list or any questions you might have about them.
I, I'd only say, I, I did see the email that you circulated to us and I was able to go through the names. I don't personally feel the need to go through each of them. But I obviously defer to others on council, especially given the fact that we're having another meeting tomorrow.
And I give great deference to the amount of work that you and your colleagues have done in putting this together. Thank you. This seems like a very thoughtful approach. Did you, one question I saw yesterday or the day before, there was one applicant that came in late. Did, did that enter the mix and?
I, you know, I, I did, that's, that's one of, there's two reasons I wanted to, to actually make, and I'll make a motion as soon as we're done with this discussion, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda. There's two reasons I wanted to defer on the final two appointments. One was to take a, to, to do a little bit more due diligence on the application that just came in because the person is a Realtor, has a considerable amount of experience. I, I did not accept every Realtor because I didn't want the whole thing to be Realtors. I thought we needed a variety of experience and the Realtors tended to come from, were clustered in certain parts of the county. And I was looking to get a little bit more geographic diversity, given the number of people we were appointing and the fact that they're going to be looking at residential properties around the county. But I did want to look at that and I did want to follow up with a couple of the people who, you know, the, the, there's one person in particular where there was a health issue. So with that, if, if I would just make an emotion, emotion, we have the capacity, we've already approved appointing up to, you know, appointing eighteen, I'm going to make, amend this to say that the motion be amended to appoint sixteen of the eighteen members of the Auxiliary Board of Assessment Appeals, reserving the right to appoint two additional people at a, you know, at our next meeting.
Second for that motion to amend.
I'll second. Are we, are we voting on this today?
No, no, I'm, I'm amending the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So the agenda would be to appoint sixteen of the eighteen, reserving the rights, you know, reserving the last two appointments for, for the subsequent meeting.
Got it.
So I guess we're just adding, right now it just reads approval of appointments to the board. So Ms. Coogan, we would just add approval to appoint sixteen members and as per the attached list and, and Ms. Ruth, or you would provide an attached list tomorrow?
Yes, I, I will actually provide, assuming there's no comments on the list, I would propose that we take the top sixteen names on this list and provide it to, to Ms. Coogan to attach to the agenda for tomorrow.
That's, that would be fine by me.
Yep.
Great.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second to have the, the agenda item changed to sixteen people per the attached list, which will be provided to Ms. Coogan. Any comments or questions with regard to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Are you good, Ms. Coogan?
I am.
Okay. So moving on to the next agenda item, number twenty-seven, this is the Board of Assessment Appeals, Approval of Appointments for the Board of Assessment Appeals. Ms. Ruth, or you want to take this one as well?
Sure. Just so people realize, I think if you've looked at the website for the county in the past, anybody who's, you know, totally into detail, it stated for a long period of time that these appointments run through twenty twenty-two. In fact, the appointments were made out of sequence and, and I don't know why that happened. I'm assuming something just kind of got, you know, as sometimes happens, people, because they serve until their successors are appointed, they just didn't get reappointed at some point and they got reappointed at the wrong time. But in the interim, there was a stat, the Consolidated Assessment Law, which I've mentioned like five times today, was passed in twenty eighteen by our state legislature and it's changed a lot. For some period of time, the state law had said that terms had to be four years. And then the terms, in fact, got, our charter had always said two. So this, in this weird way, Delaware County amended its code to say it would be four years, which was consistent with the state law, but now the state law says that the county can say two or four years. And since our charter says two years and that trumps the code, we're back to a two-year term. So sort of no matter how you look at it, these, the, the seats were vacant and we put it out there to be reappointed. The three incumbent members of the board did apply. As you'll see in the list, Jeff Rudolph is one of the three and he is an incumbent. I am recommending because I think it's really valuable to have and to have some institutional memory on a board like this, especially as we're going into what is a very complicated year, most likely complicated two years, because both this year and next year, I would expect a lot of appeals if the reassessment goes forward. I think there's a lot of value to having that. Mr. Rudolph is a, is, he's an engineer. He is a commissioner, a Springfield Township Commissioner. But he seems to be very competent, highly thought of by our assessment staff. The other two applicants, Bethel Loyce is a Realtor. She was in the vetting process by our, she'd actually applied for both the Auxiliary Board and the regular board. And in the vetting process, you know, by our assessor and Mr. Cordis was, it was really like ranked as high as you could be ranked. She lives in Thornbury Township. I recommend her. I, you know, I don't know if anybody else has any comments on that. Rosalynn Jones Johnson applied for the Auxiliary Board and I'll be honest, we did not get as many applications for this as we did for the Auxiliary Boards. And maybe because we weren't publicizing it as much. I asked Mrs. Jones Johnson to, by the way, and just in interest of full disclosure, her husband also applied for the Auxiliary Board and I'm recommending that he be on there. They live in Nether Providence, but lived in Yaden for many, many years. They were both very civically engaged there. I mean, going back to two thousand eight, I believe Mr. Johnson might have been an elected official. Ms. Jones Johnson was heavily involved in civic activities. They know the eastern part of the county. I believe if we appoint her, she will be the first woman of color to serve on our Board of Assessment. She's a retired educator. She does, they, she knows quite a bit about home values. She would have to be educated, I think, on some of the other things that come before the Board of Assessment, but she's one of those people who I have no doubt that by the time she started hearing cases, she'd practically be ready to sit for the assessor's exam. That's the kind of person she is. So I would strongly recommend her and Mrs. Loyce and Mr. Rudolph.
Okay, any other questions or comments from a council?
No, I just want to again, thank you, Christine, for such a thorough process and bringing together the panel to vet these folks and to come up with what I think is a really strong list. So thank you. Thank you so much for taking this on.
Thank you, Christine. All right, we are moving on with great speed to agenda item number twenty-eight, Discussion Regarding Posting Agenda and Supporting Materials on the Website. I think this is Ms. Schaefer.
You can talk about it tomorrow.
We will talk about that tomorrow. Agenda item number twenty-nine, Request by the Controller's Office for Payment of Current Bills. I'm sure that is sitting in the County Council Office Room. If folks would care to don a mask and take a look at that, they could. Solicitors Report.
Nothing else, thank you.
Nothing else. Any public comment? Ms. Ruth, or I believe you have the keys to the kingdom with regard to public comment. Is that?
Yeah, hang on just a second and I will pull it up. I just, there had been some discussion and I don't know if we wanted to get into it today about addressing antibody testing. Is that something we're going to do or, or not discuss today?
I think perhaps in the interest of looking at the hour, perhaps we could bring that up tomorrow if folks are so inclined.
I would just share with people a conversation I had with Rosemary Halt and that was that it said if we are not going to proceed with it, we should probably let them know if we're not ready to let them know today, we should let them know we'll be ready to let them know tomorrow because I, I guess, Ms. Grace, you've been having some conversations with the executive in Chester County. Can you just quickly fill us in on that while I pull these comments up?
Yeah, I, I did. I spoke with them. Chester County is going to begin doing the testing. Bobby Kegel told me their chief administrator, they're going to begin either Wednesday or Thursday of this week. They do have enough test kits to accommodate Delaware County if you were to choose to do it. They are doing the antibody testing for their first responders and their healthcare workers. They're anticipating thirty thousand. And as I said, they have, they could accommodate us as well. They, there is an expense to this. There is a special lab that you need to use when you're doing this antibody testing. They have a contract with the lab. The lab expenses two hundred and seventy-five thousand for thirty days. Delaware County, if we were to choose to do this, we would either have to have our own contract with the lab, the lab, or we would piggyback on theirs. I don't know what the additional cost would be if we were to piggyback onto theirs, whether it doubles or not, you know, we don't know. The, the test itself, test kit is twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents per test kit. So looking at the thirty thousand, you know, this is a, if that's the number that we would have, I, I didn't think that ours was that large, but I can't imagine they would be that much bigger than we. That, you know, it certainly is an expensive consideration, but this is, this is what the details would be if you would want to do it. We have discussed that we, the implementation would occur here in Delaware County. You potentially could be making it available to your, the first responders, to the healthcare workers. We do have in place the, the protocols that we have developed through our Medical Countermeasure Task Force. And so we would be using, you know, similar infrastructure to be able to administer this test. So we can talk about it more tomorrow if you'd like and can consider that.
Yeah, let's, let's, I would like to talk about this tomorrow, but let's use the next, you know, thirty hours or so to gather a bit more information about, you know, alternatives and antibody tests, you know, it's very much a jump ball right now. There, there are a lot of antibody tests out there for COVID nineteen and, and they're being vetted as we speak as to their effectiveness. So we need to really kind of process all of that before we make a decision here.
Thank you. I, I did need most of that time to get these questions lined up.
Just the last thing I'll offer there is, you know, we're talking about roughly one point two five million dollars here. If those numbers hold up. So if we think about our cares money, that's a big chunk of it. Perhaps folks want to do it. I'm not saying one way or the other, but just to, since I like to do math in public. That's what I'm coming up with.
It's, it's, it's a lot. I agree.
I, I'll, I guess, Ms. Grace, I would just ask that you kind of quickly follow up with Mr. Kegel in Chester County and let him know that we need to defer this discussion until tomorrow.
I will. And also, which I didn't ask, is the manufacturer on the, on the test because Mr. Madden is right and we've all seen that, that there are a number out there. I'm, I'm, I'm sure theirs is fine. But, you know, we ought to know that as well. You should know that as well.
Well, they, they haven't gotten the EUC approval yet, as far as I know. But lots of antibody testers haven't either and they're frantically trying to get that
Right.
on the FDA.
Yeah.
We do have some questions. Three were received yesterday, but after our press conference, so I'm assuming that they are for today's meeting. I'm going to read three of them that are all from the same individual, Mr. Tyler, I believe it's Mr. Tyler Sims from Forest Sussex Court in Garnet Valley. His first question is, you mentioned in your update on Monday that you, that your effort to fight COVID is more testing. How much testing is adequate? Are you going to test everyone every day? If not, then what is the importance of more testing? I'm going to go read his other two comments and then we can see if somebody wants to reply. Second question that he asked is, why has Chester County been more successful at fighting COVID and having fewer cases and deaths than Delaware County? And the third question is, who is responsible for contract tracing in Delco and what is the process to perform the testing? I mean, I'm, I'm happy to address some of this. I think the short answer is we do believe that the key to reopening the county economically is testing, testing, testing. I mean, I've seen that. That's what we're being told by our public health officials. That's everything I read. I do not know what the threshold is that would be adequate. I can tell you it is certainly more than we are able to do now, especially in our higher risk populations and our first responders, our nursing homes.
We go to the next one. Can I just loop in on that? I, I, we have asked our colleagues at the Chester County Health Department to put together a plan proactively and, and sort of, not proactively, was the word I'm looking for. Conditionally, I guess, on having more testing as to what we would be doing with X many more tests. And if we get Y more tests, what would that look like? And Z more tests, what would that look like? So it's a, it's a good question. It's raised. The answers really are that the more tests you have, the more you can incrementally do to combat COVID nineteen. And, you know, as we see seventy percent of our, our deaths in Delaware County have been nursing homes, frankly, the answer initially is that that's really where we would prioritize any additional testing that we would have. So that in these hardest-hit facilities, they would have the means to do more frequent testing for staff that are coming in and out the door to make sure that they're not, you know, asymptomatic, bringing in COVID nineteen into a vulnerable facility, things of that sort. So that's really where you start. But from there, I think it starts getting into where you roll it out within the broader community. And that's really where, you know, for all of these things, we have to defer to the experts in this area and that's our health department. But it's, it's something that they're working on and, and, you know, we will be continuing to fight like hell to get as much, you know, resources that we can have to, you know, safely reopen Delaware County. And that resource that really, we really need is testing in order to be more granular in our combating of COVID nineteen. Christine, that's, that's all I wanted to add on that first one. I, I don't, what was the, I'm looking back at my notes.
I guess I'll add the second, the second one was, why was, why has Chester County been more successful in dealing with the crisis than we? I, I don't, I don't know how one measures one's success or failure in that regard. I don't, I don't know how one measures one's success or failure in that regard. Chester County is different than we are. They have fewer positive cases and I'm happy for that. They are a different county than we are. They are far more sparsely populated than we do. We have more people than, than they do, though. Our land size is probably half of their land size. Another distinction is the fact that they actually had a health department when this whole crisis began. Whether or not that played a part in their ability to, to deal with this in a different way than we did, I don't, I don't know, but it's, 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 it's impossible to sort of ascertain why, why one area is being hit harder than another at this point. I, I saw a headline the other day wondering why zip codes in certain areas, why, why one town and not the next town over. It's just, it's not something we all understand now. And someday we will understand this when the, when the history is written, we'll understand it, but we, we don't, we don't spend a lot of time Monday morning quarterbacking, except to the extent that it helps to inform us as to how we should operate going forward. If we think we can quickly learn a lesson for what's going on that would change the way we would operate going forward, we certainly would do so.
Yeah, I'd only add to that, I think, you know, to Brian's point, there, there are lots of really smart people trying to figure out why certain countries are doing better than others. There was a lengthy article last week that I read about how for every rule that they think might apply to why one country would be hit worse than another, there are exceptions to that rule and I think that applies to counties as well. I will also add that Delaware County has a lot of nursing homes. We really do. We have an aging population. And proportionately, as we know, that's been a hard-hit area. That probably is another factor. As we've, you know, we've spoken to our, our partners, the Chester County Health Department, they've raised that point as well. That's all I have on that second question.
I would, I would add, I think, I think you've both hit it. Population density is, if you look at where the hardest-hit cases are, you know, the hardest-hit communities around the, the country, it is largely driven by population density. And I would add money seems to help people who are in less densely populated areas, who have the luxury of sheltering in place without being, you know, in really close quarters. It helps cities. You can do that less. Suburbs, you can do that more. Farms, you can really do that. And I, I think, you know, so the money and the population density are two big drivers. And I specifically asked, you know, Chester County has a considerable number of nursing homes too, and I, I had asked, and I think one of the, the fact that they have their own health department that, well, the county health department does not regulate the nursing homes. That's the state health, that's the state's job and like, people need to realize that. What they do do is they have a relationship with all of their nursing facilities and they were really able to be in communication with them and push things out in a way that I think was, was much faster than we were able to do. And you know, it is evidenced by the fact that Fair Acres, well, it is not immune from this and it absolutely has COVID-19 cases and it just had deaths. It is, was far better prepared going into this than many of our other nursing homes. And part of that is because guess what? We could get to them really quickly. We had a really good chain of communication and command and we do not have that with the other facilities because they don't have a health department. So his last question was, who's responsible for contract tracing, contact tracing in Delco? And what is the process to perform the testing? I, I think the quick answer is Chester County is our health department for this purpose and they will be, unless, you know, until we're in a position to sort of take it over, they would be doing it. At this point, there is, there are plans being laid out for that. I know Ms. Dr. Taylor's been working on it and, you know, certainly in conjunction with Rosemary Halt, who's our consultant. Anybody else have anything else they wanna add on that? Okay. The last question came in today. It is from Carl Ballas, 100 East Glenolden Avenue, Glenolden, Pennsylvania. Mr. Madden was quoted in today's Times, the seventy percent of the deaths in Delco are in nursing homes. Andy Deniman was also quoted today as saying sixty-five percent of the deaths throughout the entire state of Pennsylvania were in nursing homes. So the stats we are using to make decisions are totally skewed and therefore downright false and do not in any way accurately reflect the reality among the general population. We should begin reopening immediately in a staged manner. This seems to me to be getting ridiculous. Am I missing something here? And honestly, I think I speak for a lot of other people in this matter. The current policy is simply wrong as it ignores this critical factor in analyzing the overall situation. Your thoughts? Question mark, question mark.
Well, I'd only say that this is a question that could be answered in, in a minute or in about a half an hour or probably beyond that. But I will take a stab at saying, you know, the separation of the nursing home population from the other numbers is not in any way a, a statement of lesser importance on either. And that by separating them out, you're not, you know, I, I don't think they're, they're misleading statistics that the state's giving. I think, to me at least, it, it shines a greater light on the really challenging, challenging situation in our nursing homes. By separating them out, they don't get lost within the mix of the larger population numbers. So I, I wouldn't say that they're, they're being, you know, misleading to us, but I think we can be more you know, more effective in combating both if we look at both separately.
I guess I, I would, I would only add in that the question sort of suggests that County Council has authority over the reopening or not of the county. We absolutely do not have that authority. That comes from the governor's office. And I think people, there are some, some folks in Delaware County get it, other folks don't, but County Council is not the one making the call whether this should be open or not. We are five different council members. We probably have five different views about the speed with which we should open. But at the end of the day, we don't spend a lot of time deliberating whether we should be open or not because it's not our call to make. I mean, we, we, we may talk about it in all our spare time, because it's obviously of great interest to us as citizens of Delaware County, people who own businesses, people who have friends who own businesses and, and have friends who have folks in nursing homes and whatnot. But it is not our, we do not have jurisdictional authority over deciding whether to open or not. We can ask the governor, just as any other citizen could ask the governor and, and he, he may choose to listen to us or not, just as he might anybody else. But be, be clear, Mr. Ballas, this is not a Delaware County Council call here. Any other questions, Ms. Ruth? All right, this is the time we have for council comments. Anything from council? The only thing I'm gonna add is that typically at noon, we get on a call with the rest of the counties. We were not able to do so because we were here. But just prior to that, we get an update by, from the Chester County Health Department. And today's update shows that we're gonna announce sixty-two more deaths in Delaware County today. So we, we, it's a heavy day, I guess, and we take this stuff seriously. Sorry for getting emotional, but each one of these people is a citizen. It's our county, their mothers, their brothers, their sisters, and it is a pain, painful, it pains me to announce that, that we have sixty-two more deaths. So we'll keep, keep at it here in Delaware County. We'll, we'll keep doing what we can here and hope everybody stays safe. Let me, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.